I call the Committee of the Whole to order for Monday, July 24. And we will begin as typical with our land acknowledgement. For more than 15,000 years, the First Nations walked upon and cared for the lands we now call home, Anishnaabik, Hodenoshoni, Ojibwe, and many others who were families, friends, and communities the way we are today. The town of Callingwood acknowledges the Lake Simcoe-Narwhasaugah Treaty of 1818 and the relationship it establishes with the original inhabitants of Turtle Island. We acknowledge the reality of our shared history and the current contributions of indigenous people within our community. We seek to continue empowering expressions of pride amongst all of the diverse stakeholders in this area. We seek to do better and to continue to recognize, learn, and grow in friendship and community, nation to nation. And with that, I will ask for a mover and a second or once I read out our adoption of the agenda, and you'll note there were three addendums, that the content of the Committee of the Whole Agenda for July 24, 2023 be adopted as amended, addition of report to item 6.2 PRC 2023-04 Callingwood Arts Center Feasibility Study Phase III Proposal, addition of report to item 6.5 C 2023-17 Updated Council Staff Relations Policy Report Added, and addition of item 6.7 CAO 2023-11 Sustainable Development Goals SDG Foundation to Community-Based Strategic Plan CBSP and Downtown Master Plan Steering Committee. And a mover and a second or councillor Potts and Deputy Mayor Friar. Any comments or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest regarding the meeting this evening? Seeing none. We all know our practice is to bring it to the attention of the Chair if something comes to your attention. And the process for this afternoon, we're going to try to get a jump on a few things. We're going to recess for 30 minutes or so, approximately around 4:30, depending on when the codif what I bring forward comes to. And then 5 o'clock, we have a public meeting, and then we have a deputation, and then we'll carry on with the rest of the agenda. So with that, we are going to move to departmental updates, item number seven. And I'll turn to the Deputy Mayor because there's been only one request for departmental update.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. And through you, I would like to request Director Culver, if he could update us on the work at Sunset Point in regards to the new retaining wall that's being put in and also in regards to the crosswalk.
Director Culver.
Thank you, Chair. And through you to the Deputy Mayor. Actually, I'm going to ask if I can get a couple of images just put up on screen because I think it helps to contextualize a little bit of some of the questions we've recently received around the work being done there. The questions that we're getting recently have a lot to do with a practice people used to formally undertake, which was to kind of descend the grassy slope on the west side of the west beach, climb over the former retaining wall, and use that as sort of a launch point for swimming activity. And with the new revetments, that's no longer possible or advisable. In truth, it wasn't advisable previously, and we actually had a lifesaving society audit done, I think it was in 2017, I believe, that talked about formal accesses and where they should and shouldn't be, and how we should sort of manage and encourage uses of the beachfronts. So I do understand that it's a change in practice for some members of the community, and change is always very difficult. Actually, if you scroll through a couple more of the slides, you can just sort of see, I think there's two more. It just gives you an idea of sort of what the previous conditions were and what we've had to deal with. In addition to elevating the wall, there is a riprap slope that is adjacent to the wall, and I know this has caused some concern as well, in so much as it's different than what was put around the Anukshuk revetments when we did that project. The gauge is smaller, it's, I think, 170 millimeters, it's about two feet, those boulders. And so there's concerns about whether they'll work with Georgian Bay facts, and I've had some confirmation from the shoreline engineering firm that we've been working with for a very, very long time right now, at this point, that it is designed, it's specific and purposeful. In fact, things taken into account are such things as what are the prevailing winds? Where do the storm winds come from? What is the angle of that slope and how it would respond to either ice or water? The wall itself is actually the primary protection for that shoreline. The riprap slope is actually a secondary effect to add additional protection. So I wanted to show these pictures just to kind of remind people, because I do know that it is a significant change. It has been going on for a very long time. We struggled for quite a while in acquiring our permit to do the in-water work with the MNRF. There's a whole pile of reasons for that. And but at the end of the day, we're very, very close to concluding, and we hope to have the park completed and cleaned up in short order.
May I ask a question?
You, Chair. Just as well, maybe the crosswalk, plans for the crosswalk?
Yeah. Thank you to you, Chair. So I think the Deputy Mayor picked this up, some Trails Committee meeting minutes, and so we will be changing the crosswalk condition between the new Sunset Point Playground and the north side of St. Lawrence Street. It will be treated with a PXO, a pedestrian crossover, that has signalized lights. If council remembers the way here Ontario initially was treated with the signalized, or not, sorry, it's not traffic signalized, but the flashing lights that let people know that pedestrians about to enter the crosswalk, that's the treatment that will be applied at Sunset Point. And it is a bit of an enhancement to the normal treatment, but it's in recognition of children and people crossing there.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you. I did receive a question on the weekend, so I did walk by it today. What's the kind of estimated completion? I see there's just a little bit of orange fencing still up and a few bumpers, and do we know kind of what?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So there is some ground repair to be done to make it safety, even though there aren't formalized passageways, the lawns still, you know, need to have a standard. So there's some ground repair to do and a little bit more backfilling, and we should be done. I actually don't have a final, final time, but I know we should be done very soon.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. All right. Councillor Doherty and then Councillor Ring.
Thank you, Chair. And through you to Director Culver, just referring back to the crossing on Pretty River Parkway, you had said that you would be installing lights that would be similar to the ones that we saw on Hereonterio Street at that crosswalk.
Sorry, I misspoke or was misunderstood. The crossing I'm referring to is over the St. Lawrence Street, not the Pretty River Parkway. And the treatment I'm referring to was the original treatment over here on Ontario at the Black Ash, sorry, at the Hamilton Drain Trail, before it was upgraded to the overhead lights. It had the signs with flashers on them, and that'd be the type of treatment.
Right. Sorry. So through you, Chair, we had, well, as you know, there was a number of complaints from motorists and users of the crosswalk on Hereonterio Street at the Hamilton Drain that those lights, as they were first installed, just weren't visible, and so that sort of led to the installation of the overhead lights. So I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned that we're going to encounter the same sort of situation.
Through you, Chair, I'd suggest that the conditions at St. Lawrence Street are vastly different than the conditions at Hereonterio Street, even in the number of lanes, et cetera. Having said that, I didn't come prepared to answer questions about the warrants associated with it, how enhanced the treatment at Sunset Point is, but I'd be happy to refer back to Mike Solko, who's been finding guidance to us, and come back to you with an answer about why that's the appropriate choice.
Good. Councillor Ring?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. The retaining wall at Sunset Point itself, it's completed now with the riprap and the cement blockage that you've built the wall with?
Yeah, correct. Through you, Chair, the only treatment that we're still examining, because it did come to light through other complaints that we received, was some of the hooks that are used to move the blocks into place. They need to be ground down so that they're flush and don't present any kind of hazard. So yeah, we're trying to figure whether that goes in this project or we treat it after the project is complete, but yes, it will be dealt with.
Okay, so there's no sense in me asking the question, what you're going to do with that, because that's always my question.
No problem. Thank you. So thank you, Councillor Ring, but yes, we were made aware of it, and we're going to make sure.
There's also, if I may, there's also a rerod that sticks up, not just the hooks, in some spots where I guess it come up through the concrete when they poured the blocks, but you obviously would know that.
Actually, thank you through you, Chair. I appreciate you bringing that up, because that, so yes, we are going to do a complete scan to make sure that there are no protrusions that would cause any kind of injury. And we're also going to take some time to evaluate whether a capping treatment is appropriate there. I'm not 100% sure it is, so I'm not making a promise, and we would have to come back to council for some additional budget to apply that, but we'll take a review of it based on the concerns we received from the public.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Allen.
Hi. I also got, I guess with the park being such an attraction, everybody is down there writing the council. So I also got a letter today, or an email, I should say. So I just wanted to ask, the pond that sort of developed and all the mud, just to the west of the washroom down there, is that going to be part of what you mentioned is going to be backfilled and there'd be ground repair, and it would be done in relatively short order?
Yeah, through you, Chair. So I think you were speaking of the laydown area that was sort of the center point for all of the works that were completed. Yeah, there was a lot of damage done there, so we have to do a lot of ground repair, and we try not to have puddles appear on the grass, because it doesn't do the grass any good. So we'll make sure that we backfill and grade properly.
Okay, I'll start my email. Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to go very quickly to agenda item number eight, which is reports and minutes of other committees and boards. And the motion is that the minutes of the following committees and boards be hereby received, and recommendations contained therein be approved. The Callingwood Downtown BIA Board of Management, June 8, 2023, Trails and Active Transportation Advisory Committee, June 8, 2023, and the Museum Advisory Committee, June 29, 2023. And I have a mover and a second or please for that. Councillor Perry, Councillor Houston, any comments or questions through regarding those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And then we'll move to number nine on the consent agenda, just to say that there is nothing on the consent agenda this evening, so we will eliminate that from our list right now as we speak. And I think committing to our 30-minute break, because we've been going since 2 o'clock, that, you want to try and do that other one? Would council or committee entertain 6.3, which is the agreement for the early termination of the Georgian Tranquil Humane Society? If we think there's going to be a lot of questions, then I think I'll postpone it over. All right, we'll move that over and commit to our recess now to be back for 5 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.[836.75]
So, good evening everyone and for some of you welcome back and for those who are just joining us. We are mid committee of the whole agenda and we are now at item number four which is the public planning meeting. I have the introduction here which I will read through. So, welcome to Collingwood's Public Planning Meeting for a Proposed Zoning Bylaw Amendment for the property municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street, located on the west side of St. Paul Street, north of Simcoe Street. No decision will be made this evening and the purpose of this meeting is to introduce the proposed development and obtain public comments on the planning application. The meeting will begin with presentations by staff and the applicant. Members of the public will then be invited to offer their comments or questions regarding the proposal. And once the public portion of the meeting has been completed, no more public comments or questions will be allowed at today's meeting. I will then ask council members if they have any questions and once all public and council questions and comments have been received, staff and/or the applicant will have an opportunity to respond or provide clarification if appropriate. And all questions and comments specific to the purpose of the subject applications will be addressed in a future staff report. It is very important that the town receive the correct names, email addresses and mailing addresses, including postal code of individuals having an interest in these planning applications. And if you plan to speak to the committee at this meeting or if you want to be notified of any future council or committee meetings concerning the application being considered, you must provide this information. So, under the Planning Act, one, only those who have verbally expressed any comments here tonight or provided a written submission of any comments prior to council's decision have the right to appeal any decision of council to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And two, if you do not make an oral submission this evening or a written submission to council before the council decision, you may not be added as a party to an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So, this meeting is being recorded and streamed on the municipal YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. Your name, address, comments and any other personal information are being recorded according to the Municipal Act and the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes will be available to the general public on the town's website. So, I will ask the planning services also confirm that notification to the public has been given as required by the Planning Act within their presentation this evening. And again, I would like to remind everyone that no decision will be made today and the applications will be considered by council on a future date. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff and welcome Planner Teakle.
Thank you. So, good evening everyone and for some of you, welcome back and for those who are just joining us. We are mid committee of the whole agenda and we are now at item number four which is the public planning meeting. I have the introduction here which I will read through. So, welcome to Collingwood's Public Planning Meeting for a Proposed Zoning Bylaw Amendment for the property municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street, located on the west side of St. Paul Street, north of Simcoe Street. No decision will be made this evening and the purpose of this meeting is to introduce the proposed development and obtain public comments on the planning application. The meeting will begin with presentations by staff and the applicant. Members of the public will then be invited to offer their comments or questions regarding the proposal. And once the public portion of the meeting has been completed, no more public comments or questions will be allowed at today's meeting. I will then ask council members if they have any questions and once all public and council questions and comments have been received, staff and/or the applicant will have an opportunity to respond or provide clarification if appropriate. And all questions and comments specific to the purpose of the subject applications will be addressed in a future staff report. It is very important that the town receive the correct names, email addresses and mailing addresses, including postal code of individuals having an interest in these planning applications. And if you plan to speak to the committee at this meeting or if you want to be notified of any future council or committee meetings concerning the application being considered, you must provide this information. So, under the Planning Act, one, only those who have verbally expressed any comments here tonight or provided a written submission of any comments prior to council's decision have the right to appeal any decision of council to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And two, if you do not make an oral submission this evening or a written submission to council before the council decision, you may not be added as a party to an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So, this meeting is being recorded and streamed on the municipal YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. Your name, address, comments and any other personal information are being recorded according to the Municipal Act and the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes will be available to the general public on the town's website. So, I will ask the planning services also confirm that notification to the public has been given as required by the Planning Act within their presentation this evening. And again, I would like to remind everyone that no decision will be made today and the applications will be considered by council on a future date. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff and welcome Planner Teakle.
Thank you. So, good evening everyone and for some of you, welcome back and for those who are just joining us. We are mid committee of the whole agenda and we are now at item number four which is the public planning meeting. I have the introduction here which I will read through. So, welcome to Collingwood's Public Planning Meeting for a Proposed Zoning Bylaw Amendment for the property municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street, located on the west side of St. Paul Street, north of Simcoe Street. No decision will be made this evening and the purpose of this meeting is to introduce the proposed development and obtain public comments on the planning application. The meeting will begin with presentations by staff and the applicant. Members of the public will then be invited to offer their comments or questions regarding the proposal. And once the public portion of the meeting has been completed, no more public comments or questions will be allowed at today's meeting. I will then ask council members if they have any questions and once all public and council questions and comments have been received, staff and/or the applicant will have an opportunity to respond or provide clarification if appropriate. And all questions and comments specific to the purpose of the subject applications will be addressed in a future staff report. It is very important that the town receive the correct names, email addresses and mailing addresses, including postal code of individuals having an interest in these planning applications. And if you plan to speak to the committee at this meeting or if you want to be notified of any future council or committee meetings concerning the application being considered, you must provide this information. So, under the Planning Act, one, only those who have verbally expressed any comments here tonight or provided a written submission of any comments prior to council's decision have the right to appeal any decision of council to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And two, if you do not make an oral submission this evening or a written submission to council before the council decision, you may not be added as a party to an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So, this meeting is being recorded and streamed on the municipal YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. Your name, address, comments and any other personal information are being recorded according to the Municipal Act and the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes will be available to the general public on the town's website. So, I will ask the planning services also confirm that notification to the public has been given as required by the Planning Act within their presentation this evening. And again, I would like to remind everyone that no decision will be made today and the applications will be considered by council on a future date. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff and welcome Planner Teakle.
Thank you. So, good evening everyone and for some of you, welcome back and for those who are just joining us. We are mid committee of the whole agenda and we are now at item number four which is the public planning meeting. I have the introduction here which I will read through. So, welcome to Collingwood's Public Planning Meeting for a Proposed Zoning Bylaw Amendment for the property municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street, located on the west side of St. Paul Street, north of Simcoe Street. No decision will be made this evening and the purpose of this meeting is to introduce the proposed development and obtain public comments on the planning application. The meeting will begin with presentations by staff and the applicant. Members of the public will then be invited to offer their comments or questions regarding the proposal. And once the public portion of the meeting has been completed, no more public comments or questions will be allowed at today's meeting. I will then ask council members if they have any questions and once all public and council questions and comments have been received, staff and/or the applicant will have an opportunity to respond or provide clarification if appropriate. And all questions and comments specific to the purpose of the subject applications will be addressed in a future staff report. It is very important that the town receive the correct names, email addresses and mailing addresses, including postal code of individuals having an interest in these planning applications. And if you plan to speak to the committee at this meeting or if you want to be notified of any future council or committee meetings concerning the application being considered, you must provide this information. So, under the Planning Act, one, only those who have verbally expressed any comments here tonight or provided a written submission of any comments prior to council's decision have the right to appeal any decision of council to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And two, if you do not make an oral submission this evening or a written submission to council before the council decision, you may not be added as a party to an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So, this meeting is being recorded and streamed on the municipal YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. Your name, address, comments and any other personal information are being recorded according to the Municipal Act and the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes will be available to the general public on the town's website. So, I will ask the planning services also confirm that notification to the public has been given as required by the Planning Act within their presentation this evening. And again, I would like to remind everyone that no decision will be made today and the applications will be considered by council on a future date. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff and welcome Planner Teakle.
Thank you. So, good evening everyone and for some of you, welcome back and for those who are just joining us. We are mid committee of the whole agenda and we are now at item number four which is the public planning meeting. I have the introduction here which I will read through. So, welcome to Collingwood's Public Planning Meeting for a Proposed Zoning Bylaw Amendment for the property municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street, located on the west side of St. Paul Street, north of Simcoe Street. No decision will be made this evening and the purpose of this meeting is to introduce the proposed development and obtain public comments on the planning application. The meeting will begin with presentations by staff and the applicant. Members of the public will then be invited to offer their comments or questions regarding the proposal. And once the public portion of the meeting has been completed, no more public comments or questions will be allowed at today's meeting. I will then ask council members if they have any questions and once all public and council questions and comments have been received, staff and/or the applicant will have an opportunity to respond or provide clarification if appropriate. And all questions and comments specific to the purpose of the subject applications will be addressed in a future staff report. It is very important that the town receive the correct names, email addresses and mailing addresses, including postal code of individuals having an interest in these planning applications. And if you plan to speak to the committee at this meeting or if you want to be notified of any future council or committee meetings concerning the application being considered, you must provide this information. So, under the Planning Act, one, only those who have verbally expressed any comments here tonight or provided a written submission of any comments prior to council's decision have the right to appeal any decision of council to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And two, if you do not make an oral submission this evening or a written submission to council before the council decision, you may not be added as a party to an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So, this meeting is being recorded and streamed on the municipal YouTube channel and broadcast on Rogers TV. Your name, address, comments and any other personal information are being recorded according to the Municipal Act and the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes will be available to the general public on the town's website. So, I will ask the planning services also confirm that notification to the public has been given as required by the Planning Act within their presentation this evening. And again, I would like to remind everyone that no decision will be made today and the applications will be considered by council on a future date. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff and welcome Planner Teakle.
Thank you. So, good evening or good afternoon probably everyone. My name is Justin Teakle. I'm the community planner assigned to the file for 58 St. Paul Street. Let's wait for the slides to come up. So, today's public meeting is legislated under the Planning Act and is required as part of the public process. The purpose of the public meeting is to introduce the application and receive public comments to be considered in future decision making. Next slide please. So, this meeting will follow the town's standard public meeting format. Chair Jeffrey has already provided the introduction and the remainder of the meeting will consist of confirmation of public notice, an overview of the zoning bylaw amendment review process, overview of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application, overview of the development proposal by the applicant and then the meeting will be open to receive any comments from the public followed by council. Next slide please. So, the town has received an application from the owner for a zoning bylaw amendment. Notice of complete application and public meeting were circulated together to internal and external agencies and First Nations on June 28th and were also published in the Collingwood Connection newspaper on June 29th. Additionally, as a courtesy, notice was also mailed to property owners and condo corporations within 120 metres of the subject property. Next slide please. For everyone's information, I've outlined the planning process on this slide. Anything in dark blue has been completed. We are at the public meeting stage. Next steps include peer review of the technical reports, internal review of the application, public comments and technical reports, providing comments to the applicant and then receiving any necessary modifications to the application. Next slide please. So, the property subject of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application is municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street and has an area of approximately 0.054 hectares. The property is highlighted in red on the screen and is surrounded by commercial to the north, west and south, across the street to the east or the Collingwood Museum and residential lands along Calery Crescent. The property is a designated heritage property under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act as part of the Collingwood Downtown Heritage Conservation District. Next slide please. On this slide, you can see the conceptual site plan for the proposed development. The proposed building footprint is similar to the existing building footprint on the property. The proposed development would be a residential development with three units total, one lower level unit, one main level unit and a third unit spanning the second and third floors. Parking will be provided in the rear yard accessed by a driveway along the northern side of the property. Due to provincial changes to the Planning Act, a site plan control application is not required for development with 10 or fewer residential dwelling units. However, a heritage permit application would be required for the new construction. A heritage permit was previously granted by council for demolition of the existing building on August 18th, 2022. Next slide please. In terms of the official plan, the property is designated downtown commercial core as are the adjacent properties with the exception of properties across the way on Calery Crescent which are designated residential. Next slide please. At left, you can see the existing C1 zoning for the subject property and surrounding area. At right is the proposed zoning with the subject property in orange showing the extent of the proposed C1 exception zone. So, it's just site specific to this specific property. Next slide please. The zoning bylaw amendment sought would rezone the subject property to permit a standalone residential development with a total of three units. The property is currently zoned downtown core commercial C1 and is proposed to be rezoned to downtown core commercial exception. The applicant is also seeking to have the provision that requires a minimum building depth of 15 metres not applied to the proposed exception zone. I'd also like to note that while the proposed C1 exception zone would permit a standalone residential use, it would not prohibit commercial use. Next slide please. So, I've provided comparison of the C1 zone lot provisions and the proposed C1 special exception zone provisions on this slide. The applicant is seeking to establish a minimum three metre front yard setback where the existing required front yard setback is nil or at the lot line with a maximum setback of three metres. In all other respects, the proposed lot provisions would remain the same as what is currently provided for the C1 zone. Next slide please. In terms of comments received to date, we've circulated the proposal to internal departments as well as external agencies and First Nations. We're awaiting comments from many of them and with respect to public comments, none have been received to date. Next slide please. In terms of next steps, town staff are still awaiting peer review of the submitted technical reports. Once results of those reviews, public comments, agency comments have been received, town staff will complete review of the applications and work with the applicant on any modifications to the application followed by a recommendation report to council. Following approval of the zoning bylaw amendment, the applicant may apply for a heritage permit for the proposed development. Next slide please. If anyone was unable to make today's public meeting and still wants to provide their comments, they may do so by emailing me at JTakle@Collingwood.ca or providing written correspondence by mail to the Town Hall. Verbal comments will only be accepted during the public meeting or committee of the whole meeting. Next slide please. Stay informed and be notified of future agendas or meetings related to this application. You can view them on our website or also subscribe to receive agenda updates automatically through your email. Next slide please. And if you would like to receive notice of future meetings or decision, please provide your contact details today or email me and request to be circulated in the future. And that concludes my presentation and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Planner Teakle. So, we welcome Ms. Menzies. Welcome.
Welcome, Madam Chairman. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Chris Menzies. I'm a planner and a partner at MHBC Planning and I have had the pleasure of being in front of Collingwood Council for numerous decades. Yes, I did use the D-word, decades, but not of late. So, I'm probably new to many of you here. So, many of my partners have had an opportunity to now be in front of Collingwood Council. So, this is going to be probably one of my last public meetings before I retire. So, I thought I would come to where a lot of my career began. So, I'm here to talk to you and give you a little bit more detail about the proposal at 58 St. Paul Street. If I could have the next slide. So, first of all, as a planner, I'm going to try and be as brief as possible, but one of the standard lines I use is we get paid by the word. So, I'm going to try and collapse that as much as possible. And the second thing is I'm going to try not to repeat a lot of what Justin has said, but there may be a little bit of that because I'm required to do that with my licence to practise. So, one of the first things I'm going to identify is, one, we're here for an application for a C1 rezoning exception. I'll provide you a little bit of details about that, but I'm going to start at the And the remainder of the meeting will consist of confirmation of public notice, an overview of the zoning bylaw amendment review process, overview of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application, overview of the development proposal by the applicant, and then the meeting will be open to receive any comments from the public, followed by council. Next slide, please. So, the town has received an application from the owner for a zoning bylaw amendment. Notice of complete application and public meeting were circulated together to internal and external agencies and First Nations on June 28th, and were also published in the Collingwood Connection newspaper on June 29th. Additionally, as a courtesy, notice was also mailed to property owners and condo corporations within 120 metres of the subject property. Next slide, please. For everyone's information, I've outlined the planning process on this slide. Anything in dark blue has been completed. We are at the public meeting stage. Next steps include peer review of the technical reports, internal review of the application, public comments and technical reports, providing comments to the applicant, and then receiving any necessary modifications to the application. Next slide, please. So, the property subject of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application is municipally addressed as 58 St. Paul Street, and is an area of approximately 0.054 hectares. The property is highlighted in red on the screen and is surrounded by commercial to the northwest and south, across the street to the east are the Collingwood Museum, and residential lands along Calery Crescent. The property is a designated heritage property under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act as part of the Collingwood Downtown Heritage Conservation District. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the conceptual site plan for the proposed development. The proposed building footprint is similar to the existing building footprint on the property. The proposed development would be a residential development with three units total, one lower level unit, one main level unit, and a third unit spanning the second and third floors. Parking would be provided in the rear yard accessed by a driveway along the northern side of the property. Due to provincial changes to the Planning Act, a site plan control application is not required for development with 10 or fewer residential dwelling units. However, a heritage permit application would be required for the new construction. A heritage permit was previously granted by council for demolition of the existing building on August 18th, 2022. Next slide, please. In terms of the official plan, the property is designated downtown Commercial Core, as are the adjacent properties, with the exception of properties across the way on Calery Crescent, which are designated residential. Next slide, please. At left, you can see the existing C1 zoning for the subject property and the surrounding area. At right is the proposed zoning with the subject property in orange, showing the extent of the proposed C1 exception zone, so it's just site-specific to this specific property. Next slide, please. The zoning bylaw amendment sought would rezone the subject property to permit a standalone residential development with a total of three units. The property is currently zoned downtown Core Commercial C1 and is proposed to be rezoned to downtown Core Commercial Exception. The applicant is also seeking to have the provision that requires a minimum building depth of 15 metres not applied to the proposed exception zone. I'd also like to note that while the proposed C1 exception zone would permit a standalone residential use, it would not prohibit commercial use. Next slide, please. So, I've provided comparison of the C1 zone lot provisions and the proposed C1 special exception zone provisions on this slide. The applicant is seeking to establish a minimum three-metre front yard setback where the existing required front yard setback is nil or at the lot line with a maximum setback of three metres. In all other respects, the proposed lot provisions would remain the same as what is currently provided for the C1 zone. Next slide, please. In terms of comments received to date, we've circulated the proposal to internal departments as well as external agencies and First Nations. We're awaiting comments from many of them, and with respect to public comments, none have been received to date. Next slide, please. In terms of next steps, town staff are still awaiting peer review of the submitted technical reports. Once results of those reviews, public comments, agency comments have been received, town staff will complete review of the applications and work with the applicant on any modifications to the application, followed by a recommendation report to council. Following approval of the zoning bylaw amendment, the applicant may apply for a heritage permit for the proposed development. Next slide, please. If anyone was unable to make today's public meeting and still wants to provide their comments, they may do so by emailing me at JTearc@collingwood.ca, or providing written correspondence by mail to Town Hall. Verbal comments will only be accepted during the public meeting or Committee of the Whole Meeting. Next slide, please. Stay informed and be notified of future agendas or meetings related to this application. You can view them on our website, or also subscribe to receive agenda updates automatically through your email. Next slide, please. And if you would like to receive notice of future meetings or a decision, please provide your contact details today, or email me and request to be circulated in the future. And that concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Planner Teakle. So, we welcome Ms. Menzies. Welcome.
Welcome, Madam Chairman. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Chris Menzies. I'm a planner and a partner at MHBC Planning, and I have had the pleasure of being in front of Collingwood Council for numerous decades. Yes, I did use the D-word, decades, but not of late, so I'm probably new to many of you here. So, many of my partners have had an opportunity to now be in front of Collingwood Council. So, this is going to be probably one of my last public meetings before I retire, so I thought I would come to where a lot of my career began. So, I'm here to talk to you and give you a little bit more detail about the proposal at 58 St. Paul Street. If I could have the next slide? So, first of all, as a planner, I'm going to try and be as brief as possible, but one of the standard lines I use is we get paid by the word, so I'm going to try and collapse that as much as possible. And the second thing is, I'm going to try not to repeat a lot of what Justin has said, but there may be a little bit of that because I'm required to do that with my licence to practice. So, one of the first things I'm going to identify is, one, we're here for an application for a C1 rezoning exception. I'll provide you a little bit of details about that, but I'm going to start at the end of the planning stuff as opposed to the beginning. And the end is, is that we have a complete application before council, and to do that, I had to do an evaluation of the proposal, and it's my opinion that the application conforms to your official plan, the county's official plan, the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and is consistent with the provincial policy statement. I have some other planning stuff to do later, but we'll get to the more interesting stuff. So, as Justin has identified, the site is within your downtown Core OP designation and is within the Heritage District. And the Heritage District, you may recall, is effectively divided into two sections, the Commercial Core section and the housing built form area. And this is on the housing built form area, ironically enough, because there's housing in this area, and it's a bit of a transition area between the downtown Core and the rest of the fringe area of downtown. So, next slide? I'm sure you're all very familiar with the very modest, and I would suggest somewhat dilapidated, green bungalow that's at 58 St. Paul Street. So, one of the reasons I wanted to show this slide, one is to echo that the Heritage Committee has granted a conditional demolition permit for the building, so it's gone through a heritage impact assessment in part to determine that that could happen. And secondly, to show a bit of the built form on either side. So, there's a historical, three-storey, brick, multi-story residential dwelling unit on one side, and there is a bungalow on the other side. And that has a lot to do with the context of what the architect looked like, that should be a replacement building for the property. Next slide, please. As has already been identified, the footprint is similar, but we're proposing a three-story building with three residential units. One of the units will be slightly below grade, so half below grade and half above grade. The second unit will be the complete ground floor, but once again, it's a little above grade. Both of those units will each be bedroom. This third unit will occupy the second and the third floor, so the area in the roof, and that would be a three-bedroom unit. There's amenity space at the back, there's a parking area at the back as well, four parking spaces for the three units. And effectively, the residential unit is almost lined up with the other two units on either side, and I'll explain a little bit more of that in a moment. If I could have the next slide, please? So, this is the proposed facade for the building. And once again, I am no architect, nor do I have any heritage qualifications, but I will suggest to you that the architect was sensitive about what's going on on both sides of the property. One, the building is reminiscent of the older building, I'm going to use the term on the left-hand side if you're looking at the property. So, there's repeated elements, there's windows in the third floor in the window, so it doesn't have a domineering presence. But similarly, some of the elements that are in the bungalow on the right-hand side have also been repeated. So, there's a centre hallway plan, and the window sizes are very, very similar on the ground floor of the bungalow as they are in size and stature to the proposed unit. And I will, Madam Chairman, advise that my client owns the bungalow on the right as well. Next slide, please. So, this is the balance of the planning stuff. So, as Mr. Teakle has identified, we're asking for a couple of things to be considered by council in a change to your C1 zone. So, as a planner, your C1 zone, at least in my mind, was very much set up to provide you a built form that is very similar to what you see along here Ontario Street. Buildings that are attached to each other, so a zero lot line setback. Buildings that are on the sidewalk, so a zero front line setback. Three-story buildings, and buildings that are long. So, that's somewhat characteristic to a zoning code that you would see in a downtown context, a historical downtown context like Collingwood. This site is within that same zone, so from a planning perspective, perhaps not the same type of built form flavour you would see. So, we're asking for relief from two things. One, your bylaw requires commercial buildings, or any building in the C1 zone, to be a minimum of 15 metres deep. So, once again, those long Collingwood commercial buildings you see along here Ontario Street, we're asking for relief of that in the site-specific bylaw, so that the provision doesn't apply. Normally, in a residential zone, you don't have a building depth requirement as a zone provision. For case in context, the building is about 13.25 metres deep, so just shy of the required 15. The second thing that your bylaw does, which is characteristic of your downtown, is have a maximum building setback from the sidewalk. Normally, you've seen bylaws, especially in a residential context with a minimum, your downtown has a maximum. And there's reasons why that is the way it is, and it's appropriate. We're at, so your maximum is three metres from the sidewalk, the setback to the building. We're asking that that be increased to four. Our building is setback 3.25 metres. And the rationale for that is not only to allow the design to properly work on the site, but the multi-unit residential building on the left is about five metre setback, and the bungalow on the right's about three. So, this is a bit of a transition in between those two to sort of keep it somewhat in line, but respect both setbacks. Next slide? So, I would suggest, Madam Chairman, that based on the context of this site, that there are planning merits for council to consider the application, and the architect has tried his best to be case-sensitive on the property, and it conforms to your official plan, and is very sensitive, in my opinion, to the Heritage District. And we have had an updated HIA, which has looked at this proposal, which is currently before the town in a peer review. And I would be happy to answer any questions. And once again, it's been a pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much. All right. So, now, we will go to the first call to the public for comment. Is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please check with our remote participation.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. We do have a number of attendees participating remotely. If you would like to address the Committee of the Whole regarding this public planning meeting, please press the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And there's no interest at this time.
All right, so we'll move through to call number two. If there's anyone wishing to speak, we're going to go through three calls, just in case someone's waiting to the very last. Do you want to just wait?
And again, a second and third call for online attendees. Remember to press the raise your hand feature. If you're participating using a telephone, use star nine.
Thank you, Clerk Thomas. All right, so third and final call here in the gallery for anybody wishing to speak to this application. Seeing none, I will ask, close the public comment portion of this public meeting, and then I will go to council now, and councillor Perry.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. I may have missed it, and if you did mention it, are these units are rental units? Am I correct?
If I may, Madam Chairman, the short answer is, there's been no determination as to whether they will be rented or utilised by the owner, but there are three units there, yes.
Right, and I just want to throw this out there, that perhaps consideration could be put into an affordable housing unit, if possible, like it, no commitment, obviously, but just, I want to get it out there.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'll bring that back to the client. Thank you, sir.
Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members who have questions for the applicant or staff? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. And there's nothing for staff to respond to, so we will carry on with our agenda. So, thank you very much. Dean, for everything? All right, so at this point, we do have one deputation, and I'm looking for Dave Epp, if he's here to come forward. And Mr. Epp wants to discuss with the committee the multi-use facility and MRF feasibility study, and you have 10 minutes, sir, and we will give you a 30-second warning if you need it.
10 minutes and counting, right?
Right on.
Well, good evening, folks. Pardon me if I'm, you know, more casual. It's my first time speaking to council. Good evening, Dean. I've spoken to Dean quite a few times about this. First of all, my name's Dave Epp, and I'm the president of Collingwood Minor Hockey. And along with me is Trevor Littlejohns, and he is representing, he's the vice president with Collingwood Girls Hockey Association. So, unfortunately, Ivy Martin, who is the president, was unable to attend tonight, so Trev's here for her, sadly. We'd rather have Ivy. So, essentially, I just wanted to, this is an initial kind of FYI to the council and to town staff, Dean already being familiar about the importance and how we are advocating for a multi-use. Earlier this year, we formed what's called the Collingwood Sports and Recreation Alliance, and that involves all of the major sports in Collingwood, be it ice, turf, or court, and we've got about seven, and swimming, we've got about seven presidents involved total. The idea of the alliance is to not battle with each other and say that one sport's more important than another. It's to really present the importance that we feel is needed for Collingwood to have a multi-use facility. And obviously, for those of you who have been around for a while, you know the history of the multi-use in Collingwood dating all the way back to 2007, 2008. So, let it be known that we are unified as far as all the major minor sports organisations here in Collingwood, to not fight against each other, to allow the feasibility study to determine that. Just to say that we need something ASAP, it's long overdue. Now, second to that, and I apologize, I don't have a formal PowerPoint, I was busy actually doing my real job and getting paid. Long overdue, and importance of land acquisition. Not, it's not a small chunk of land that needs to be acquired. Dean and I have spoken, you know, 50 acres minimum, I'm guessing. And land's not getting any cheaper, and it's not getting any more available. This needs to be done and addressed now. Now, I do have friends in the arts and theatre gallery network here, and I'm not trying to discount the importance of an arts theatre gallery. We do know that that's currently in a feasibility study and trying to decide on land. However, I am going to say on behalf of many middle-class families and families who have kids in multiple sports in this town, and people are moving to this town, especially since the pandemic, that there is a massive need, and I feel, and the other presidents feel, that it's more important than an arts and theatre movement. And again, not trying to discount that movement that's obviously occurring simultaneously, but a multi-use facility with the sports addresses the mental health considerations for all our youth, the wellbeing of our youth, as well as the elderly people and everybody else, let's face it. Now, I will say that we all know that in minor sports, it's volunteer-based. We don't get paid a cent for any of this. We spend probably, a lot of us who are committed to our sports, be it soccer, baseball, rugby, whatever, probably 20 to 40 hours a week doing it. And those of you who have been involved in minor sports and volunteering your time, you know it very well. We don't have time, we don't have the money to lobby and start, you know, a formal movement, and that's why we need your support, council, town staff, to help us get this moving along. I'm not sure if anybody from a minor sports organisation has presented to you guys yet, but, you know, if they haven't, it's long overdue. The last thing I will say, well, I'll try and make it quick because I'm going to allow Trevor to speak here, is we do have a website that's being finalised, and the purpose of that website is to register people who are supporting this, the alliance, and what they represent, and basically pushing for this multi-use for our kids and our families in the future, not to fight with one another, again, to say that one sport's more important than another, but to say, here, we have 3,500 kids who are in multiple sports and need this facility. So, when that website is finalised, we'll certainly share it with Dean, but the idea is to get people registered and get a quick survey or poll in line to show, when the feasibility study starts, to show what is necessary across the board. I've got lots of thoughts, and I didn't want to get too specific. This is really just a generic presentation, an initial presentation to say, here we are, and it will be coming along soon. We'll probably go to the paper and to the radio. We just want to finalise this website right now. Thankfully, we have a good guy who is working on it. He's actually the chief technologist with the NHLPA, the Players' Association, Andrew Hislop, he could not make it tonight, but it should be quite impressive when it's done. So, I thank you for your time, and here's Trevor Littlejohns.
Welcome, Trevor.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
So, the only thing I want to add is just how much of a nightmare it is right now, scheduling for the girls' hockey, that's what I do, and how much we're outsourcing to other centres. We're looking at Creemore, Stainer, I know the boys are in Thornbury, and, you know, having four o'clock ice times, five o'clock ice times is just not sustainable for working families. It just can't happen any longer, so hopefully you give it some thought, and yeah, good messages, Dave.
Okay, thank you very much. So, from a committee and council members who are very familiar with juggling priorities, we understand, and also, I think you have about three past minor hockey presidents here. We feel your pain. So, but thank you for coming and presenting, and I know you're in contact with Director Culver, and that will continue. So, thank you. Yes, Mayor Hamlin, question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for coming, introducing yourself to those of us who aren't, you know, haven't met you. I just wanted to say I hope in our community, we don't get down to I'm more important, and that sports is more important than arts and music, arts and music is more important than sports. I heard from both of the communities last summer, the sports community and arts and music, I'll call them, and for whatever reason, our community has not been able to put a shovel in the ground for either of these two kinds of facilities in the last number of decades. And I know, at least from my perspective, I would like to see them both move forward. I don't know why we have to pick one over the other unless someone tells me. I know it's a matter of funding, I know council will make ultimate decisions on all of this with the input of our community. But just as you don't want to be fighting rugby against swimmers, I really hope our community doesn't come down to fighting sports against arts and music. So, I just wanted to leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Any other comments from council, questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
May I respond to that?
Absolutely, yes.
Dean, just in my conversation with Dean, absolutely support the arts and theatre movement, 100%, but I agree with you, it is about funding, and it's more that I do not want the sports and recreation to be ignored. It's, when we talk to people who are visiting Collingwood, or even local residents, the biggest thing they say is, why is there not a multi-use facility in this town? It's the biggest question, and people are all talking about it. And I agree, they're both important. It's going to be up to council and staff to, you know, figure out the funding and how it can be done. I'm just here to say I want to work together and push for that movement. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right. Excellent. So, that moves us to agenda item number six, which is staff reports. And Mr. Epp gave us a good segue. I think we're going to jump over one, and we were going to move to 6.2, PRC 2023 04, Collingwood Arts Centre Feasibility Study Phase III Proposal. And I will ask Director Culver to introduce, I believe the consultants are available virtually and have a presentation, but you may want to set it up first as well.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so council is very much aware of the journey that we've been on through phase one and two. The conclusion of phase two helped us to kind of narrow the playing field with respect to location or location options, as well as some sizing. And we identified, I think at the point where we were talking about moving to phase three, that this would be probably the most critical phase in so much as it will help, will be probably the final step before council needs to make a very critical decision about Collingwood's future. And, and so, yeah, we're looking to get into phase three. As we kind of took a look at what phase three would require, we knew that there was, it would require a multidisciplinary approach. There would be a lot of different professions involved. And we struggled a little bit with how staff would have the capacity to oversee multiple disciplines and how we would, you know, what expertise might be required to provide guidance to those consultants. We looked at a procurement and advisory services approach and did some research in this regard and worked with purchasing to kind of try and figure out how RFPs might get written and how would we be able to properly identify what needs to be evaluated in each of those, those sectors. It was sort of in the midst of that conversation that they identified this opportunity through Kinetic GPO, which is a group purchasing organization, to see if we could find a kind of an opportunity where we would acquire the services all at once. And that led us to a conversation with Colliers and we've had a few conversations since then. And what we were pleased to find is that there is a great depth of experience. And in particularly with respect to performing arts facilities and as well as project management, they've seen these projects move from beginning to end. And that really helped us in the conversation with them, figure out what, what was important for us to have listed in terms of the work plan for phase three. So I think it's probably a good time to turn the conversation over to Colliers. So Dean Plater, I believe, is online as well as his colleagues. And I'll let him introduce himself and potentially run through their, their slide deck for you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Director Culver. So Dean, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Can, and your slide deck's up and we can see it here.
Excellent. Well, so first off, I have a colleague of mine with me, Gabby Bouchard, who's joining as well, but thanks for the opportunity to speak. We understand you're on a bit of a tight agenda this evening, so I'm going to move kind of quickly here and then maybe we can open it up for conversation. So if we can go to the next slide. We can jump over this one. So who are we? So Colliers Project Leaders. So the organization's actually been around for over 30 years. We've delivered, we're actually encroaching on about 18,000 public and private sector projects, working at all different levels of government, private owners, all different types of projects. We're an ISO certified organization. That just means we have a lot of robust processes and we're very consistent in the way that we deliver things. And we're a big organization with, with a lot of experience, specifically in these types of projects we're going to talk about here in a second. Next slide. So although the core business of Colliers Project Leaders is the actual delivery of the projects, the, the project management and construction management, our team, Gabby and I, we sit in a specialized group called Infrastructure Advisory. So what we really do is a little bit what we're going to discuss here this evening. We're really at the due diligence phase of the project, helping with business cases, feasibility studies, options, appraisals, all of those types of things to ensure that municipalities are making the right decisions before they start moving too far forward. Next slide. So the concept of progressive elaboration. Now, I know there was a lot of questions that came back from the council. So what we did, we just took a few minutes this morning, Gabby and I, we, we put together a couple of things to sort of explain, you know, where you've been, what that, what that journey is and what the process should look like before, you know, moving forward to design. So if we could jump to the next slide. So when Gabby and I, you know, took apart this file a few weeks ago and just understanding where Dean and his team had been, they were starting to move forward to into a design phase, and that was building off of some really good work that had been conducted previously by an organization called Nordicity. And the deliverable for them was a feasibility study. But in the evolution of a project in this due diligence phase that we're talking about, the feasibility study does not provide enough context for the decision-makers who are all seated around the council chambers there to really understand what they're committing to before getting into a project. The natural progression that we see with most major cities and some of the smaller cities are evolving to this is beyond the feasibility, actually resolving a business case to get a deep understanding of what the commitment is, both today and also for decades in the community, is that this asset needs to be maintained and operated. So when we're talking about a business case, there's a couple of really important pieces that are in here that were not addressed within the feasibility study. So a functional level design, Nordicity had some ideas about, you know what, potentially needed to be in the building, but it wasn't really elaborated enough to, to really understand what the size of that building would be, exactly what services might be in there. And then ultimately, what is the cost of that going to be? The, the costing that they had prepared, they used a methodology. It's an acceptable practice. It's called parametric estimating and they use a a published document that comes from the Altus Group. That's a high-level order of magnitude costing that's done on a square foot basis. What we would propose at this point within a business case is to do detailed costing at a class D, which is, there's different level of costing, but there's, there's a reasonable level of accuracy in that to actually inform what is this project going to cost from a construction perspective? And that gets developed by a professional owner as a quantity surveyor. There was some high-level order of magnitude numbers with respect to fundraising potential. And what we're suggesting at this business case phase is to do a validation of that, you know, actual sounding with fundraisers, get a clearer understanding of what that looks like. As well as exploring any, you know, grant opportunities that may be available through the province or through the federal government. The operational cost was another piece that they'd worked on, but, but it's difficult to actually understand the operational cost. They looked at comparable performing arts facilities that had been done before, but until the details of the, the functional design or program as it's known are completed and that class D, it's actually difficult to get to sort of a pinpoint on what the operating is going to look like. Next slide, please. Just briefly, in summary, so again, Nordicity and, and, you know, the team in Collingwood had done a fantastic, you know, a bunch of work up until this point. Still very high level, not really refined enough that, that we would recommend proceeding until some of these details are resolved. So what we're suggesting is actually tighten up a business case so the council can make a really informed decision on how this project, how or if this project should proceed and what the financial implications that might look like. That's okay, we can jump to the next slide. And this is just a, just a bossy, you know, we quickly. These materials, I assume, will be all available for the council members. Next slide.
But I'm assuming that you said was maybe testimonials or past projects that you could make available to us going forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, there is. So within this slide deck that we've provided, you, I would imagine that all council would have access to this. So what we did, because we're proposing actually a team of consultants on this, this isn't just Colliers. Within the scope of what we're proposing, there's a couple of really key pieces. One, there's the business case. Two, we're also proposing doing preliminary concept designs because it really helps inform decision-making. Is this a 400, 600, or 800? And, you know, putting, you know, just, just getting that on paper to help the council and, you know, the citizens understand, you know, sort of the direction of this. Within the business case development process, we, we put in for a large piece here to actually do some public consultation to get a deeper understanding of what the community is looking for, as well as with the counselors. We have the costing piece at, at sort of a class D. And then the validation of the fundraising and potential, you know, grant programs that are out there. So, you know, I, I recognize there's a pretty big price tag on that that we proposed at $149,000. There's a lot of work though. And, and the work is really important to, you know, be able to bring together a single story and recommendation back to council on how to proceed. Again, not taking away anything from all the great work that's been done to date. But our, you know, our suggestion and is, you know, I said in that first slide, you know, we've done 17,000 projects, we've done a lot of work, all different types of projects, specifically here, and we're going to jump over a couple of these. At, at this point in the project, because we've seen projects go sideways, for lack of a better expression, where, you know, councils aren't exactly sure what they're committing to and then, you know, cost escalations of 100%, 200% over the initial, initial budget. We would recommend that, you know, a business case process be undertaken to, to inform the council and the citizens of Collingwood. So here's one, Kamloops, we can jump to the next one. Kelowna, here's another piece that we did. Next slide. Calgary Arts Commons. Next slide. This is a nice facility in Sudbury. And then as we jump into the next slide, our partner in this who's Diamond Schmidt Architects, who arguably is one of Canada's foremost architects in developing performing arts centers. They also have a long list of design projects for which they've done and, and we can, we can jump into some of these quickly, but as, as we suggested, these will be, yeah, these will be available to, to all the counselors after the fact. Next slide. Yeah, that's a beautiful facility, Halton. Next slide. Burlington, another one. Next slide. And, and that's it. As I said, I was, I was trying to move through there quickly, understand that you have quite a bit on the agenda. I, I think we could probably stop presenting, but we're, we're happy to field any questions at this point.
Public presentations and questions. Just a few rules of engagement. We always ask you to be concise, respectful, factual. And we really appreciate your input is valuable, so we need it to be in that form. And you will be timed at five minutes. We'll give you a 30-second warning. And I think that's all the rules of engagement I can think of right now. So we look forward to hearing from you. So who would like to speak? Erica, I know you have a pushing with performance tonight. So would you like to come and be first?
Whoops, always the short one. Thank you very much for letting me go first because I'm going to run off to the Porchside Festival right after this. So Chair Jeffrey, Mayor Hamlin, council and staff. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Erica Angus and I'm the executive director at Theater Collingwood. So on behalf of our Board of Directors, our Strategic Development Committee and staff, I wish to endorse the proposal set forth by Director Culver today regarding phase three of the development of a Collingwood Arts and Cultural Center business case. I wish to commend Director Culver, the Department of Parks, Recreation and Culture, CAO Sonia Skinner, and all staff who have been working so diligently on this proposal. I'd also like to commend the forward thinking of Mayor Hamlin and counselors of the town of Collingwood with regards to an arts and culture center for the good of not only Collingwood's outstanding creative sector, but the entire community as a whole. I want to recognize the hard work and focus that has gone into getting this project to this stage. I also want to make a little personal statement now in regards to my friend from this sports community. I just think it's really important that everyone know a little bit about me. And that is that my husband was a referee in the NHL for 15 years. And I absolutely have a love of sports and of culture. My children were figure skaters and hockey players. They were also singers, drummers and musicians of all sorts. So we absolutely want to work together and see the importance of both of these sectors. Next year, Theater Collingwood will celebrate its 40th anniversary, which includes 40 years of production experience and expertise. And I want you to know that we are prepared to roll up our sleeves at Theater Collingwood and help in any way we can to make this project a reality. Because that's what we do in the arts. We're committed to continuing to provide Collingwood with the very best of entertainment and educational experiences and look forward to being a creative hub for the community and economic driver in the region in the Center for Arts and Culture. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else in the gallery who would like to speak to this agenda item? You could just introduce yourself. That would be great.
I will, thank you. My name is Rob Hart. And I'm here representing the case organization, Collingwood Arts Culture and Entertainment Group. I would also like to say this is really an exciting day for the residents of Collingwood and a pivotal point for the arts community. This is an absolutely critical phase of this project to be able to get informed information for the council to make an appropriate decision. On behalf of case, I'd like to thank CAO Sonia Skinner, PRC's Director, Dean Culver and his staff, Mayor Hamlin and counselors for their effort and commitment to building an arts, culture and entertainment center in our town. It's exciting to see that this project can now be passed over to the experts to create an art center concept and to get us to hopefully a shovel-ready position. This is a key step in providing a tangible solution that residents, the arts community, and potential donors can get excited about. They need to see something to get excited about and we need to provide that for them. We look forward to the town and staff and our council making a new art center a reality in our town. After four years of effort, this truly is an exciting day. And on a personal note, as an athlete, the last time I want to hear a discussion and debate about arts facilities and athletic facilities should be today. We don't need to hear it anymore. We've, we have a town that can produce both. It's just a matter of timing and, and the appropriate facilities and the appropriate land, land allocation. We do however, have, have one point of clarity from the, the report and from the Colliers document. And that's around site selection. On April 3rd, when Phase 2, the Phase 2 report was presented to, to committee on the whole, 48 St. Marie and the terminals were the two site options in the report. The committee voted down the terminals and left really 48 St. Marie at that point in time as, as the only kind of site option. During that meeting, council members were made aware that 48 St. Marie was also on a floodplain and possibly subject to some NVAC, NVCA input or, or scrutiny. Also during that meeting, given the new information about 48 St. Marie, part of the committee discussion at that time was to recommend moving to Phase, a Phase 3 proposal. And agreeing that St. Marie location was really the preferred area that you'd want to put an art center in. But a suggestion was also made at that, at that point in time to leave the options open to which specific site on St. Marie would, would be feasible after further review. My question is, given the uncertainty of 48 St. Marie being on the floodplain, does Phase 3 also evaluate 140 St. Marie as an option? We certainly don't want to end up back at square one if 48 St. Marie is for some reason turned down and, and isn't the viable site. So really the question is, are we looking at and evaluating more than 48 St. Marie Phase 3 of the project? I think it would be prudent.
That's a great question. Thank you. And we'll have Director Culver address it.
Excuse me. Thank you, Chair. So the rationale behind presenting sort of the single target in Phase 2 had a lot to do with being able to express sort of the pros and cons of each of the two sites that were being forwarded consideration at that point. And, and I was, I couldn't recall and I didn't get a chance to go back and look at the meeting, but Nordicity definitely walked into that meeting. but Nordicity definitely walked into that meeting, um, understanding that, uh, not just the two on St. Marie Street, but Pine Street, they were virtually interchangeable as it came to, um, considerations for potential sighting. Uh, that 48 here Ontario Street was sort of the, uh, um, the straw man opportunity to sort of conduct a pros and cons analysis or, or discussion. Uh, so, um, certainly, uh, the southern parking lot on, um, St. Marie Street is, uh, is also a possibility, as is Pine Street, um, subject to a really good and thorough evaluation of those potentials. Um, I do note though, that most of the downtown, um, a large portion is, uh, within the floodplain or the NVCA regulatory area. Um, so any site chosen, whether it's the, uh, 140, 48, uh, would require, um, you know, a robust planning approach to make sure that we're conforming with all of the required, uh, legislation and mitigation measures that are needed to build properly. Uh, so I don't want it to be seen that that consideration is what would move it necessarily on and of itself, I think, but, uh, a thorough evaluation of all the possibilities is, is appropriate.
Great, thank you very much, answers your question. All right, um, yes, please come forward.
My name is Jim Rowe. I'm, although I sit on the Board of Theater Collingwood, uh, here I'm representing myself and what I bring tonight. I just retired about a year ago, worked in arts and entertainment for over 40 years, so I have some ideas. I'm not going to present them all now, but we can talk after. When I read the report and I saw that Colliers was bringing Diamond Schmidt on, I thought I had died and gone to heaven. I would say it's not arguable that they're, that they're preeminent. I say it's without a doubt they're the preeminent arts center architects. From the Four Seasons Centre, home of the Canadian Opera Company, to countless others. These are the guys to go with. I made a list a while ago and there was three names on it and Diamond Schmidt was at the top. So I wholeheartedly endorse this approach that Director Culver is taking. There are two things I'd like to see also done in the report. One of them is, I think we should have a look now at the governance models for a new art center. I think it would do us good. See how this thing was going to be run, because that might play into how it's going to be designed. The second thing I'd like to see is an economic impact assessment done. It'll help us secure funding from other levels. It'll show the, what an art center brings to the table in terms of how much the community benefits. And, um, so I think I'd like to have that thrown in if we could, that's just my idea. And as for governments' models, I do have some ideas on that as well. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Terrific. Thank you very much for your enthusiasm and volunteerism to help. Mr. Vincent, please come forward.
Thank you, good evening. Tom Vincent is my name. Um, I just wanted just to chat about the site selection process that Dean just mentioned. Um, you know, with case, we have talked with the BIA and they support us 100% in what we're trying to accomplish here. And I can tell you that if you talk to your BIA and you talk about that site at 140 St. Marie Street, um, that would be their choice. There's no two ways about it. Um, by the way, there has been a floodplain analysis done two years ago, Dean. And with all due respect, 48 is on a floodplain and 140 is not in the floodplain. And we could build, build a underground garage at 140. It would be very challenging to do at 48. It wouldn't be recommended. So again, going back to this whole site analysis, uh, the other, I didn't, I wasn't aware of Pine Street even being judged as a site, but, um, maybe I misheard. But I think that the 140, from our perspective, is the ideal site. Uh, we also have talked about the Leisure Time Centre site, uh, which would obviously be a good site, but not as downtown as what we're talking about here. So I think again, going back to the evaluation of the sites, we should be looking at 48 along with 140 and possibly the Leisure Time. And to get an indication, as Rob said, you know, the last thing we want to do is put all of our focus on one site and spend six months finding out that the NVCA, in fact, I would go to them tomorrow and ask them what challenges we might have for the site, you know, which would give us an indication of whether we should even be going ahead with 48 St. Marie Street. So I'm just saying is that there are challenges. I think we should be taking a look at two or three of the sites that, that have been proposed. And, uh, because obviously we have no idea why the grain elevator was proposed, which was, uh, kind of a silly one, because we rejected it four years ago. But regardless of that, that's by the by right now. And let's just move on, you know, the assets that we have available to us right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. All right, is there anyone else, uh, in the gallery at this time that wishes to speak? If not, I'm just going to ask the clerk to check with our remote participants, please.
Thank you Chair Jeffrey, we do have a remote participant. If you're interested in addressing the staff report, please press the raise your hand feature. And not at this time.
Okay, that's terrific. All right, is there anyone else in the gallery who wishes to speak before I put the motion on the floor and then it becomes a council discussion? All right, seeing none. Uh, the motion before us this evening is that staff report PRC 2023-04, Collingwood Arts Center feasibility study Phase Three proposal be received and that council approves an expenditure of up to $200,000 from the Arts and Culture Legacy Fund to contract the services of Colliers project leaders in the development of a Collingwood Arts and Culture Center Business Case. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councillor Ring, seconded by Councillor Houston. And, all right, so council members, questions, comments? Councillor Houston, take it away.
Uh, thank you Chair. Through you to Director Culver. Um, I sent a few of these through earlier, uh, so you had a chance, um, to respond. And I wasn't surprising you with any questions here, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that the, the consultants aren't limited by the scope that was identified in, in Phase Two. And these questions kind of cover some of that. The, as we enter Phase Three, uh, are the consultants going to be empowered with the ability to analyze other locations other than 48 St. Marie Street? Mainly, uh, in regards to what was already discussed as far as the, um, as far as the potential flooding. Um, we do have a copy of the report from the 2022 Town Master Stormwater Management, uh, Plan that, that shows where those potential flooding zones were. And Greenland did identify that 140 was not, uh, in part of that floodplain. Um, so I just wanted some clarification that even though 48 was identified as where we were going forward with Phase Three, that the consultants would still have the ability to look at and would look at their options.
I think I did hear earlier where Director Culver did confirm that we weren't restricted to 48, but if you could just confirm that for us, please.
Yeah, through you Chair, um, I'm actually going to, uh, so first of all, yes, no, there's nothing, there's no policy that's, that's restricting us from looking at other sites for sure. Um, and, uh, you'll note, um, and I'm sure this will be a question that comes up, so I can answer it now, um, that, uh, Colliers', um, quote is a little bit lower than what we've proposed through the report. And the reason why is because we've, we've also come to understand over two phases that we need to have some room to move within, uh, these projects. They're just, uh, they, they require, um, that flexibility. So we've, we've added some contingency that allows us to move. So should things like the governance model need to be reviewed or, or whatnot, that we have some flexibility within the contract to move. Um, but I'm going to actually, I, I, just because of one of the reasons why we're engaging Colliers is for their expertise. And so I'll ask, um, if, and I know I'm putting him on the spot a little bit here, but potentially if Dean Plater might, might be able to, um, uh, help out with whether floodplain analysis is a part of this fees.
Dean and Gabby are both smiling, so I don't think you're putting them on the spot.
Oh, no, this is fairly common, thank you, through the Chair. Um, so what we do, so when we, when we conduct these types of reviews and develop a business case, we do a comprehensive review of all the work that's been done to date. And, and to give you a bit of comfort in this, at, at the end of the day, our, our job is to really provide an independent report and recommendation. So we're going to try to, you know, make some, some clear recommendations based on all the work that's been done to date. Uh, you know, we're not engineers, we're not, we're not going to conduct, you know, floodplains analysis and, you know, dewatering, et cetera. But if, as long as that information is available to us and the architects, we're going to take it apart and, and we're going to scrutinize it very carefully to see what, what is the best decision for the city council in Collingwood.
Follow up or your next question?
Next question.
Next question, go ahead.
Um, just in regards to, uh, the discussion that we're going to have later on the Murph and looking at it as a regional project, um, has there been any discussion with our neighboring municipalities on forming this as a regional project as well? And if not, would the consultants have the ability to engage our neighbors to have that discussion for additional potential funding?
Uh, thank you through you Chair. Um, so in Phase One, there was, uh, there was a bit of a, a discussion around, you know, who potential regional partners might be. Um, there wasn't, um, it, it would not confirm that we would have any. And, uh, but having said that, the scope of, of study that has been done in Phase One and Phase Two, and I know that in development of the business case for, in Phase Three, um, is that the region is seen as the revenue source. There, it will be an attraction, much like, um, effectively most of the businesses and buildings, whether they be in sports and entertainment or any other, uh, way regarding Collingwood. Um, we know for a fact, and this will come up as part of the Murph discussion, uh, that our pool is populated largely by people outside of Collingwood. Um, so it has formed a part of the, um, the higher level business cases and it will form a part of, of the, uh, more detailed business case analysis.
Follow up?
Uh, yes, just two comments then. So I, I do have, and I'm glad that they answered the question around, um, uh, the consultants being restricted to the scope of Phase Two, because one of the concerns that I had that came out of Phase Two was on the recommended size of Theatre One, potentially being reduced to 400, which brings it fairly close to the seating capacity of the Gayety Theatre downtown of just over 300. Um, so my concerns with this is that in doing so, the municipality is potentially becoming a competitor to a private enterprise. And my second concern with that is that the cost of building this new theatre, when we already have one of nearly comparable size, isn't a fiscally responsible decision. So that's really just a comment that I wanted to put on record. Uh, and then the second is, um, in the mention of Phase Three, uh, it talks about public consultation. Uh, and it was expressed that staff is limited in their ability to be able to provide some of that support to the consultant. Uh, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to do it, but, um, I'm wondering about proposing a motion at the appropriate time that, uh, there's a committee formed that consists of staffs, professionals in the arts and culture industry, and, uh, others in the public, um, be formed to ensure that the progress of the project supports the vision of the community as a whole.
Just checking with the clerk here, I, I'm, I'm edging toward notice of motion as opposed to part of this.
That's what I was thinking.
All right, so, uh, we'll, we'll move that into the notice of motion category.
All right, thanks.
That's it? Thank you. All right, uh, anyone else with questions? Councillor Doherty, you look like you're going to raise your card.
Thank you. Um, I, I'll have to admit, when I first reviewed this staff report, uh, I was concerned that it was just more of the same. Um, but drilling down deeper, um, hearing our consultant's presentation tonight, uh, I can see that it is definitely going on beyond, uh, where we have been. One question I will ask though is ultimately, will the results of this study give us a final location and a virtually shovel-ready proposal? Through you two, um, I guess either our consultants or Director Culver?
Director Culver?
Thank you Chair, if, I'll, I'll start the answer and then potentially I could ask for some support from Colliers as well. Um, with respect to what is considered shovel-ready, I think that that, um, that's, that can be a misleading definition and definitely I'm, I'm culpable of contributing to that because I've used the term myself. Um, so shovel-ready in the context of being able to apply for funding, um, that is the goal of, of the completion of Phase Three. Um, but shovel-ready in terms of we could start building it the day after Phase Three? No, that's not, that's not going to be where we're at. We're at class, class D estimate, um, and some costing that helps us to get to decision-making, but we're not at a place where we know where all the wires are going, where all the tubes are going, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, unless I've misspoken, maybe Dean or Gabrielle can help out with some more insightful comments.
All right.
I, I think that's pretty accurate Dean. Um, so, so coming out of this, we're, we will make a series of recommendations based on all of the, you know, the insights we get from the community, the councillors, site conditions, fundraising, funding, like, you know, all of the, sort of the inputs to the business case. Would, there will be a number of options in the business case likely too. And then we will recommend what we think is the preferred option for the council and, and for the citizens of Collingwood. What happens beyond that is, is Dean suggested, you know, moving to, moving for A with the fundraising, B, uh, applying for different grants and, you know, other sources of revenue. Then when you get to that stage, then you would start to move to the design, which coming out of the design is where you technically get to this position of, of shovel-ready. So there's a number of things that need to happen, um, before the ground breaks. Quite a few things, to be honest.
Great. Follow, follow up? Okay. A question?
Uh, yes, um, I liked, uh, the, um, suggestion that, um, uh, Jim made that we establish, uh, a governance model now. Because it actually leads to, in my mind, what, uh, Councillor Houston just suggested, that, uh, a committee be formed, a task force be formed now. And a governance, um, uh, committee would certainly help us to start thinking about who we're going to bring in as experts and how we're going to guide this thing forward, you know, from a, uh, multi-disciplinary approach. Um, and also, uh, representatives both from the municipal, um, the public and, um, staff. So, uh, I, I would be very likely to support this recommendation.
Uh, do you, you don't need a further response from Director Culver as to at what point that governance model would come into our process?
Um, well, actually, uh, following along, um, with the suggestion that had been made, um, my thought was that, that this might be something that would happen soon, like maybe in tandem with the start of this, uh, final study.
Can I offer something here? So again, yeah, we, we do this often. So a, a project of this complexity and, uh, that's going to be this invasive into the community, we, we actually would expect that, um, there would be a steering committee in place as, as soon as we started our work. That's, that's pretty common practice for something of this nature.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right.
Yep. Great, thank you. So those are my questions.
All right. Councillor Perry?
Oh, yeah, I was, uh, thank you, uh, Chair Jeffrey. I, I just want to throw this out there. Um, I was kind of hesitant on asking this question because it's so early in the, in the process, but, um, something to consider moving on, and I don't know who would answer this or, or speak to it, but it would be, uh, is there any thought or consideration to, um, corporate sponsorship for a building like this? I know it's fairly common nowadays, um, and I know it's early days in the process, but something that we could possibly look at?
So through you Chair, um, so that's exactly the kind of strategization and, and roadmapping that we'd be asking Colliers to do within the work plan is to, is to start, um, and we, our conversations together, they would probably have a, a subcontract that specializes in this work. Um, but they would be looking at everything from naming rights to government and upper tier funding options to private fundraising. Um, it's actually, and, and this has been stated in our collaborative meetings so far, it's been, it's really important that we, we also take a bit of, um, a landscape review of the fundraising potential and, um, what's going on in the community. Because as everybody's aware, the hospital is needing to have fundraising, hospice relies... because as everybody's aware, the hospital is needing to have fundraising, hospice relies on fundraising. There are lots of, you guys recently talked about the GTHS and their need for fundraising. So they're really, it's important, I think, to take step one first, and taking step from worse, taking step one first, is actually doing a review of, of what are all the possibilities, and what are all the priorities, and how are we going to navigate this really steep hill, which is why we've included it in this work plan with Colliers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Counselor, any question, comment?
Thank you. Excuse me Chair Jeffrey. I, I don't know whether there's a comment, I can start with a comment. I remember when we, when we talked about at the end of phase two going into phase three, that the preferred locations were the two that were discussed, the elevator, green terminals and, and 48 St. Marie Street. And I know we, I think soundly turned down the grain elevator. But I also left that meeting, Committee of the Hall, as not saying that 48 was our number one choice, because we did hear some resistance, and, and some of the things that were mentioned today were brought up at that time. And I'm just wondering, and I, and I, and I think it's been kind of indirectly determined, or at least answered, and maybe through you to Colliers, would, would you, would that be part of your business case? I know you said you're, I mean, you'll, you'll do, you'll take all the information that was from phase one and phase two into consideration with, with your phase three section, but would the location be a big part of your final report? And if so, I just wonder if you could give me an answer to that?
Sure. I'm happy to take a stab at that. Well, it really has to be. To be sort of pragmatic about it, like, we're talking about a couple or two or three, maybe, maybe more locations, and, and they all have unique differences, right? We're talking about something that's in a floodplain versus something that isn't. Fundamentally, from the design perspective, that changes things dramatically. You know, what, what is in the realm of possible, what, you know, what additional structures are required? So we have to encompass, in order to be able to develop the costing for the options, like, we have to look at things very carefully. So all, I guess the short answer to that question, yes, we're, we're going to work that in. If, if there's two or three, or maybe four locations, and as, as I suggested before, working with our team and also with our partners, we'll, we'll give an independent perspective on that within the report.
At the last committee of the whole meeting, I expressed concern, and that there were pieces of the, of information that were missing from me. This has been a helpful exercise, getting this updated phase three process explanation and such. So I had a few questions, and my, the first one would be on the reference to class D cost estimates. I just wondered if it could be explained to us a little bit about the accuracy level of that. Class D suggests to me, like, there's a B, C, and, and A, and with class D, we generally consider to be 75% accurate, or, or something in that kind of realm or, or such. So I wondered if, if through you Chair, if I could ask that question?
Sure. Yep. Dean or Gabby?
Sure. Happy to answer it. So where this project started and the costing, and I'll try to sort of tell, tell you the project lifecycle and the way the costs get developed. Where the project started, you had order of magnitude costing that was provided through the Nordicity report. And, you know, as I said, they use a technique called parametrics, where they, you know, they derive costs from other similar projects. It doesn't go to the level of granularity, and you're right, it goes from a D to a C to a B to an A. The class D is developed using what's known as a functional program that's built by the architect. So that's really doing the blocking diagrams and laying out what, what, what contents actually and functions and services will actually be in the building. So the level of accuracy that we would expect, it's generally in the 20 to 30%. And as, as the project continues to move beyond this business case and then get into design, once we know which pipes and wiring and types of light fixtures and those things, those estimates generally get evolved even tighter. So it, it starts sliding from the 30% accuracy down to like a 20 at a class C, and then just as we're getting ready to go to a tender, we get a class B, which is the final drawings, because there's, there's numerous, numerous iterations of the drawings that happen in the detailed design. And then you get your class A after you come back from, from the tender. So all that to say, really, you know, coming out of this, you'll be within 20 to 30% level of accuracy. What, what we actually saw in the Nordicity report, in, in looking at the numbers, they provided wide ranges, because there's a lot of unknowns, as you know, the building hasn't been programmed as to what would be going in it. And they were at a, there was a 65% variability on their numbers that were in there. It ranged everything from, I'm just going off the top of my head, so forgive me if I'm incorrect. Roughly, they said somewhere between 12 million and 25 million. So, so that's a pretty big spread. And when we reviewed the file, we, that's where we recognized, you know, more, more work needed to be done here to refine this to advise council on, on making decisions. Does that help?
And follow up, and, and thank you for verifying that. That's, that's the assumption that I was making from all the information I was seeing. So we've, we've talked quite a bit about the sites and such, and one of the other things from the Nordicity report that I was concerned about was the lack of detail in regards to parking issues and the parking solutions. So will this phase three give us more, more of an accurate projection in that regard?
Yes, through the chair. So, so to bring it back to what I said about the blocking of the diagram and the services and, you know, the amenities, and including parking and concessions and all of those things, at this level of planning, that laying out the building into the schematic blocks, the different elements, including the parking and what would be appropriate for a facility of, you know, four, six, eight, whatever we get to, will be included within that.
And this would be through you to our treasurer. Would a phase three kind of detail be necessary, if it was going to be looked at as to whether or not this was a development charge eligible project, seeing how we will be starting into that process shortly, so?
If I may, through you, Madam Chair. So I don't necessarily think so. An art center is not something that currently exists within the town. So with respect to development charge eligibility, it's more about, is this a new service that we're offering? Is it a, does it serve a greater population and things like that? If we had a current one and we were doing an addition, there might be a question there, but since we don't currently have that facility, it wouldn't really need that phase three to understand whether it's DC eligible or not. There would certainly be a, a large portion DC eligible, I would think.
And thank you, and, and thank you for that clarification. And I guess the phase three would be much more accurate from a estimate standpoint, which would be helpful in your process.
If I may, Madam Chair, yes, you're correct. Deputy Mayor Farron, considering that we are moving forward with the development charge background study in the fall, it might make sense to have hard numbers if this was to be accepted by council.
So I'm just going to state, because I had stated my hesitation at the last committee of the hall, that hearing the information that's being provided and what the phase three produces, it provides those additional tools that I, I'm going to be relying on, on going forward. So I'm, I'm prepared to support the phase three endeavor, including those other aspects, the various site selections being considered, and those other issues that were kind of just 30,000 level looked at with parking and things like that. So I'll, I'll be prepared to, to, to support it going forward.
Great. And Director Culver wanted to have further input on one of your questions, Deputy Marisol.
Yeah, thank you Chair, and sorry to just belabor, but I actually, I wanted to make sure that, that we were being fair to the Deputy Mayor's question. I believe that Dean and Gabrielle wouldn't be as aware of the conversation around the ripple effects of that facility landing in any one of those locations. And I believe your question was actually more related to what are the ripple effect impacts on sort of the surrounding parking. But just to help, I think, with comfort on this, that's one of the things that we also took a look at when we talked about this sort of contingency. Is, is there something that can be done as we go through this process with Colliers? Is there something that can be done to kind of get an evaluation of what that ripple effect on downtown parking would be? I believe that, that Dean's answer would be related to the parking associated with the building per se. And so I just want to make sure that it had been discussed and thought of, and make sure that you understand how it was being covered, not necessarily, I just don't want there to be a misunderstanding.
I'll just clarify, I realized that it wasn't going to give us a magic answer about parking situation downtown. But what I do recall is, at the last meeting, we did have a member of the public come forward and speak quite, quite a bit about parking as an issue. So again, I just, my understanding is this report will, will examine the parking, as you say, particularly about the facility, and I understand that. And there's the broader issue for, for all of the downtown that we have to be considering. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Hamlin? And Counselor Potts, if you want to.
Thank you Chair Jeffrey. I have to confess, I was really excited when I started reading this report. I feel that we're in good hands here between the Colliers' expertise on infrastructure, advising, advisory services, and Diamond Schmidt, of course, who've done so many arts and performing arts and cultural centers in Canada and the US. So I think we have a good team here that can guide us through where we need to go. I have a question about at what point does the architectural design come into this? Because if this project proceeds how it looks, if I can say it in the plainest language, will really have an impact in our downtown. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So through to Director Culver, and then perhaps through?
Yeah, I'll do the very lightest of intros, and then I'll lean very heavily on, on Colliers to explain it in detail. But effectively, architecture is, as Dean had mentioned earlier, is not getting into the, into the detailed design level at this point, but it will allow us to work with some concepts that will help us to identify some of those broader impacts in the space. But I'll defer to Dean for this, or Gabrielle.
Yeah, thanks Dean. Through the chair. So the way that this will develop, as Dean suggested, what, what's actually in our proposal, working with Diamond Schmidt, is to, as Dean suggested, develop the concept, sometimes known as rendition. So we're, we're going to have them actually put together, you know, some really nice, you know, sort of drawings, aid it to help make with some of your decisions, but, but it will also help with the fundraising campaign that we're imagining is going to happen, you know, sort of pursuant to the project. Then the actual architectural design, after, you know, we get through a business case, we get approval, and then we get out and, you know, apply for grant funding and drive fundraising in the community, the architectural process to actually get to the, the end of the detailed design is usually somewhere around 14 months thereafter. So it, it does take time to, to actually get these things put together. But, but I hope that, that answers the question.
It's very helpful. Thank you. My next question is, I was quite taken with a suggestion by one of our deputants, that an economic impact study would be helpful at some point. And I'm wondering if this is included in this work, or if there's been any thought about if that can be done.
Okay. Well, Director Culver, should we send that right through to Colliers, or is that your bailiff?
Yeah, you know what? Let me send this one right to you to Colliers.
Yeah, no problem. We're happy to accommodate. I actually just did a really large one for the city of Regina for an entire sports district development. This is something that we can help with. So I propose to leave that with us, and Gabby and I will go away and think about what it might take to actually do it for this specific project, and then we'll work back through Dean.
Being major donors. So I wasn't sure how, what I've been thinking meshes with you doing a, you know, scope of the landscaping community before you've even finished the report. So that's my question.
All right. Who would like to respond?
I can start this one. I think that the, the trick here is that it's, it's, it's an odd and rare occurrence when especially private donors start contributing to something that they can't lay eyes on in, in some senses. So, so, but having said that, we also know that funding is a critical piece of this puzzle. There is no way around it, and it won't happen unless the funding, the model that council accepts, should they accept it, is built to last or built to work. So the plan in phase three really was to start developing the building blocks for that outcome. It may be that by the time we get to the conceptual design, that there is something there that is inspiring enough, and we want to have the right type of professional in place in order to be able to give us the advice about what is the launch point for potentially acquiring those types of supports. And definitely, when we, back in phase two, when we were discussing with council, we indicated that this is well outside the realm of expertise of staff. And so we put the question to Colliers in our collaborative meetings, and, and they came back with a few suggestions. I don't, I don't know, and I'll defer to Dean if there's somebody that they're willing to announce at this point, but I think they were going to go away and investigate the professional acumen of, of some providers in this regard, and, and come back with, with their own, with who, who they think would be the best fit to help accomplish this. And Dean, I'll turn it over to you, if you don't mind, through the chair.
Yeah. Thanks Dean, through the chair. So, so where, what we've really come to on, on the fundraising piece, and within the scope of work that we're talking about in phase three here, we, we positioned, you know, our proposal to you as a fundraising viability assessment. So here's what the actual thinking is. We think, at this point in the project, it makes sense to be, you know, engaging with community members, corporations, to, to get an idea of potentially what might become available so far as funding. It, it won't be an absolute, but it will be enough to inform the business case. And, you know, if, if, if we look at, you know, the business case through a couple of different lines, like, what's it going to cost to build the building? How much funding may be available to us? What's the operations going to look like? What's the lifecycle going to look like? From this, we'll, we're trying to actually ascertain for your decision at some point down the road, what does the funding gap look like? And what does that actually mean to the city council and the citizens of Collingwood? So at this stage, it's, it's not actually going out and doing that fundraising. And as Dean suggested, we have a number of partners that we work with that are absolute experts in this space. And in doing that sounding and that preliminary engagement with the potential fundraisers that are there, to, to get an understanding of, you know, how much revenue could potentially come to support this project, and then, you know, just sort of subtract that from the bottom line, and then what overall is the overall capital or investment commitment that will be required by the city, by the town of Collingwood, excuse me. Does that help?
Yes, thanks so much.
Okay, great. I just, the Deputy Mayor covered my question with respect to the parking and where we're moving forward on that. I know that I have brought up previously the Rose Theater and their forward thinking and revenue generation through a TV recording studio that they put in while they were doing it, which was a fabulous tour that I did. And the mayor covered off, my question in terms, it's always a chicken and egg with the fundraising. And I know that you do need something visual to, to show potential donors, but I also know that a lot of the professional fundraising that's done, say for hospitals, they have, they know, they almost have 75% of their, the, the funding commitments before they actually go out with the public call for donations. So it is a, it is a process that takes professionals who understand all of that. So my questions got covered. So if there's nothing further, I think we're prepared to call the vote. So, all those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Okay? Thank you. All right, all the arts people, we have lots more interesting things, but if you do something else with your evening, we're not opposed. All right, so we're going to go back to 6.1. PRC 2023-03, the Community Center Feasibility Regional Consideration. And I'll turn that over to Director Culver, I believe.
Thank you, Chair. So I feel like I won't do a lot of introduction, because I think this is more of a Q and A type report. But to generally just cover the background, our PRC master plan back in 2019 made a recommendation that we take a regional look at the service delivery that we do for Parks, or sorry, for recreation. Given that, even at that time, we were well aware of the influence that our neighboring communities have on our recreation offerings. And after council had approved the allocation for this year's Murph feasibility assessment, we also became aware that the Town of the Blue Mountains had had a similar outcome of their master plan, and as well, were funded in 2023 to begin the implementation of their feasibility study. So my colleague in the Town of Blue Mountains and I had a conversation around, you know, is this something that we should do, knowing that it is somewhat new ground to be treading on? And so we felt it was important to put the conversation or the decision in front of council to be made, understanding that, you know, at the end of the day, it could yield something, or it could not yield something. And knowing that that's a risk, it's important that council understands what we're asking. What's important to note is that we're not determining through this report, or through the implementation of this program that's being recommended, that a single facility be landed in one community or the other. If that is an outcome of the feasibility assessment, that'll be shared with council, and council will still have a decision to make. But there is, in my opinion, and in the opinion of my colleagues, a really interesting opportunity to take a look at the broad scope of recreation services in our region, in our subregion, knowing that we each influence the other, and see if there is positioning for facility support within those regions, or between, within those municipalities, that could cause efficiency, could cause for a higher degree of upper-tier support for funding. Whether or not there is an appropriate organization of recreation outcomes from a facility that could yield a better outcome across both municipalities. So in a very brief nutshell, that's sort of the impetus behind this report. I'll also note, too, that the library had become a part of our Murph understanding, is they were also in the phase of taking a look at their own feasibility for future expansion. And so it became another good opportunity for us to create an efficiency through the evaluation process. So with all that being said, hopefully, that was enough to sort of open the door to some good questions, and we're happy to try and answer.
Right, thank you. So first of all, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone wishing to comment on this report. Seeing no indication from the gallery, click almost or remote. All right, excellent. So we will put the motion on the floor. It is that Staff Report PRC 2023-03, Community Center Feasibility Regional Consideration be received, and that council directs staff to collaborate with staff from the Town of the Blue Mountains regarding a blending of resources to accomplish a feasibility assessment that incorporates both municipalities' needs. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Perry, Mayor Hamlin, I'm going to sever these amounts, so these paragraphs. So first of all, I'll just ask for a vote on receiving, and all those in favor of receiving the report. Thank you. That's carried unanimously. All right, so now we'll move on to discussion on the second part, which is regarding the collaborations. So who would like to speak? Counsel Ring.
Excuse me. Thank you very much, Chair Jeffrey. As with the Arts and Entertainment Center, the multi-use recreation facility is something that we needed yesterday. And I think when the money that was allotted by both municipalities, so I understand through a few emails I saw today, that X number of dollars was set aside by the Town of the Blue Mountains for feasibility study for their own recreation facility. And we've done the same in Collingwood. I don't think at that time, and I could be wrong, that the money that was allotted ever was money that was considered to be used for feasibility study on a regional facility. I think it was set aside for a feasibility study for Collingwood. And I'm worried that the more we get into feasibility studies that the money wasn't intended for, it's going to take that much longer to get what we need, and that's the facility here in Collingwood. I would have a hard time supporting a regional facility, but I could, I know today, we're not going to vote on anything. We're just going to discuss it. Maybe my mind can be changed later, but at this time, I don't see where Collingwood benefits any way in getting a regional facility with, say, the Town of the Blue Mountains. Without getting into a lot of history, I'm not sure whether they need the facility as much as we do. And I think we would spend a long time probably debating on locations, or as I did, although Director Culver just made a comment about it might not necessarily be one facility in one center, but that wasn't my impression that I got from the report until he just mentioned it. Now, I just, if it turns out to be the best thing, I think we should still go along with what we allotted the money for, and that is for multi-use recreation facility for the Town of Collingwood. And if the consultants come back and say, look, you might be better to go regionally, then maybe I think that's the time. I think we're doing it backwards. I think we're going to determine whether we should have a regional facility, and then come find out maybe that the study doesn't recommend that. Now we've got to put more money back into doing a feasibility study just for the municipal one for Collingwood. And that's just my opinion. I might be the only one with that opinion, but that's just my opinion at this point.
Appreciate the comments. Before I go to Counsel Potts, then, just to clarify, what we are voting on tonight is that staff would go to collaborate with Town of the Blue Mountains regarding blending the resources. So assuming that the next step would be to come back and explain, or say what the reaction was before we were actually voting to spend the money, are you anticipating that if they say yes, you have our go-ahead to spend that money to do it jointly? Director Culver, if you could just clarify that.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, this is where it gets tactically interesting, because Town of the Blue Mountains doesn't meet in this month, they meet in August, and Collingwood doesn't meet in August, they meet this month. So we were in a position to sort of say, like, we could go first. If council agrees or disagrees with the report, either way, that will determine the outcome, or could determine the outcome of the Town of the Blue Mountains, because both parties obviously would need to agree. So if council agrees to proceed, and Town of the Blue Mountains doesn't, then we go back to our regular program schedule. If Collingwood disagrees with the report, then that would also set us back to where we're at now, with our original intent. And if I could just very quickly, Chair, what Counsel Ring described is exactly accurate. We didn't have this on our radar at the time when we were building the budget for 2023. I came in after the fact, so he's perfectly correct in understanding that intent for the funding. It was not intended at that point.
Okay, thank you for that response. So that's, you're done? Okay, Counsel Potts.
Thanks, Chair Jeffrey. I couldn't agree more with Counsel Ring on his explanation. I would be, I'm of the opinion that with the way the Town of Collingwood's growing, and the need here, I would like to see the money put into the Collingwood's feasibility study first. And if it comes back, that it is more need-to-go, regional approach, then that's something that I would, I could consider. But I think we need to start here. I know there's been a really large demand for facilities on the west end of Thornbury, which I think if it came out that, if there was something that came down the line of, that's kind of a location that really wouldn't do Collingwood any favors. And so I think, at this point, I would like to stay within Collingwood, and try to get ourselves something first. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Doherty.
Thank you, Chair. And through you to Director Culver. So would this study demonstrate what the needs are for each individual municipality, or only if there's a collaboration?
Director Culver? So through you, Chair. If I understand the question correctly, and correct me if I don't, a joint feasibility study would look at the subregion and see, and do a complete review, including surveying, you know, all the residents in both areas, for everything from, you know, what activities, what recreational activities do they prefer to engage in? What do they feel is lacking now? It would be a broad assessment. And then, recommendations could then come out of that. And questions such as, you know, how far would you travel to attend your recreational activity could be a part of the feasibility study, for sure. The reason why this becomes something to consider is because things like, we know that, for example, if the Town of Blue Mountain builds a pool, which is part of what was identified in their leisure services master plan, that's going to have an impact on our pool, because we know right now that a large number of those residents attend our pool. Is it enough to cause a collaboration? That's really kind of for council to determine, but it's something that we needed to understand and kind of open a conversation on. But it's not clear to us what those impacts will be. There are other similar impacts on other recreation assets that we currently have in our possession, that, again, with a new facility, would there be, what would those impacts be, given that we share a border with that community? So that's sort of where the feasibility scope kind of lives now. If council doesn't agree with the report, then we would be only looking within the boundaries of Collingwood. There would be no reason or method, because they'll go get their consultant, and we'll get our consultant, and there isn't necessarily an easy interchange between the two projects. But we could also take a look at how that could be scoped to include at least some dialogue, and see if something triggers. But I would suggest that probably, that's not likely. And which, again, is completely within council's purview to make a decision and provide direction.
Excuse me. Vice Chair Doherty, I've had one of those duh moments. But it did just occur to me that I have a family member who works in the recreational department at the Town of the Mountains. So I'm going to recuse myself, and I'm going to let you continue with this part.
Okay, carry on. Thank you, Chair. So--
Excuse, excuse. I put it right up, and I'll put it over here. I, too, have a family member in the recreation department. I hadn't given that a consideration either, so I will accompany Chair Jeffrey.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that being the case, are there any additional comments from members of council? Counsel Perry, and then Counsel Houston.
Thank you, Chair Doherty. It seems weird to say that. Anyhow, I do, I know, Director Culver, you said we can't be concerned with location or anything like that, but I can't help but look forward and wonder about location. Whether we put a Murph on the west side of town, and the Town of Blue Mountains puts one on their east side of town, whether they would fit it there, I have no idea where the Town of Blue Mountains would put it, other than possibly Thornbury. Is there any consideration in reaching out to ClearView? Because I, geographically, again, I'm jumping way down the road, but geographically, to me, it fits better if we're going to partner with the municipality?
Yeah, so through you, Chair, if I could. We did reach out. I did reach out to my counterpart with the Town of ClearView, or municipality of ClearView. And they are not in the same place as we are relative to either a recreation facility or feasibility study. So it's not on their radar at this time, and it doesn't seem to be that opportunity that we identified with Town of the Blue Mountains.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel Houston.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I just wanted to actually state my support in this recommendation, and that's mainly because the cost involved in building something like this, similarly to the Arts and Culture Center, is pretty significant. And we're looking at two very large projects. By partnering with a neighboring municipality, the two potentials that we have are, one, of finding efficiencies, as was mentioned, and the other, in opening up a broader spectrum of potential funding that can allow us to get there faster. So for those two reasons, I'm very much in support of this. The other reason is that while we do represent the Town of Collingwood, I do think that, as a community, we are very regional. Our residents in Collingwood utilize resources and services in other communities, and other, our neighbors, and vice versa. So in looking at partnering together, I think this isn't just a win for Collingwood if we just do it on our side. It's not just a win for the Town of Blue Mountains if they do it on their side. In doing it together, it's actually a win for both communities. So for that reason, I'm actually very in support of this.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Hamlin?
Just going down the row here. I'm also in support of it. I can't help but thinking there's going to be cost efficiencies, having one consultant come up with the one, you know, list of questions that has to be asked, and, you know, going out into the larger two, of the two communities, and getting some answers about what the needs are. I don't consider it to be something that's going to add a lot of extra time, to the point of knowing what are our needs and what's next. I think when we get to, you know, should we have joint buildings, should we have separate ones, you know, that's another whole discussion. But I would like to know what the needs are, and where people are, you know, using their, or getting their recreation facilities from right now. If most of the Town of Blue Mountain residents are using Collingwood facilities, for example, I'm making that up, okay? But we should know that, because at the end of the day, maybe we'd say, Town of Blue Mountains, we're going to build ours, you build yours, and if you don't build yours, like, that's on you, but maybe you're going to be paying extra if you want to use ours, because we know how many of you are out there. Do you know what I mean? But we want to have the data. I think we need to know more than just what do our residents need. Our surrounding communities, they're using our facilities. And this is, I think, part of the problem we have. We're sort of in, almost in a transitional place as a community, where we are a bit of a subregion. And ClearView in particular, and Town of Blue Mountains on the other side, very much were integrated. And as much as we wish we weren't, you know, it's just where we are right now. So I think we need at least the facts. And then if, at the end of the day, you know, there's some facilities we should be sharing, or maybe they have the pool, and we have the rinks, or, I don't know, but what does it hurt to have the information? So that's what I think's important right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Counsel Ring?
If I may ask another question through you to Director Culver. In your discussions, I'm sure they're fairly preliminary at this point, but we're being asked to approve, consider about a money to go into a feasibility study. I still don't think it's the approach to go. I'm not saying-- go. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be a regional. I'm saying the first approach should be, let, let, let the consultants that we intend to give us advice in Collingwood say that that's the best approach to take. Having said that, is there any, any discussion on, it's easy for, say, the Town of the Blue Mountains, which is a third of the size of Collingwood, if that even. Like, I mean, what do we expect financially for a commitment if we do decide to go regionally? Is it 50/50? Is it 10/90? Like, what, like, what is it? What would be, have you, have you had any discussion on what they're willing to, to put into it?
Yeah. So I, through you, Chair, and again, you're absolutely right, very preliminary, and only conversations held at the staff level, none with council at their level yet either. But in theory, our conversation has been around a 50/50 split of the feasibility assessment. While our population is larger, their geography is wider. And so we're, you know, there are some influences back and forth that we think it makes sense for it to be a 50/50 approach. But again, that's subject to a direction from this council as well as the Town of the Blue Mountains Council. Both have, both municipalities have put a substantial amount into the 2023 budget to support their feasibility, their individual feasibility efforts.
If I may add?
Yes, certainly.
Also, I would be hazard to guess that hockey would be the biggest tenant. And it's not the only tenant. But I would imagine, like, I'm sure you're going to find that hockey at all levels will be the biggest tenant for a multi-use center, although you probably could have a pool. And we're talking about the library, that, that's all, should be included as well. But I mean, the recreational side, I think you're going to find hockey will be the, the biggest tenant, regardless of what level it is, male, female, junior, whatever. Having said that, as I can give you a little bit of quick history, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, other than, that's why I'm having a hard time, is the regional approach is the Town of the Blue Mountains, when it was, they had their own minor hockey system, it was called Beaver Valley at the time, and Miford had their own minor hockey system at the time. And both of them were struggling to have enough participants to have their own organization. I was part of a committee that chaired, like, through the Ontario Minor Hockey Association, that set them down. And, and they did an amalgamation where they combined associations to make one viable association, because they didn't have the participants in either municipality to run their own programs. And they were still, at the time, the biggest tenants of their each facility arenas. And having said that, when they first started, it went well for a few years. But they're to the point now where they're even struggling to ice hockey teams with two municipalities combined. So I'm not sure where, where they're going to need the facility that we, we hope to get here in Collingwood. And so having said that, I, I, like, I don't know what the expectations are. If it, if it gets ours, not ours, a facility built faster and financially, it makes sense. I could support a regional. I just, I just, I just don't see it.
If I could, Chair, I think, I think that's an excellent question and an excellent statement based on that history. And it actually speaks directly to why this became an interesting idea to explore. And I want to make sure I keep saying that over and over again, that, you know, staff were really putting forward a suggestion to be debated. We don't have, I don't have, we'll do the job you tell us to do. But the, what makes that a compelling backstory is that we can imagine, and I'm not going to, I'm going to say hockey in terms of Collingwood, and I'm going to use a nondescript sport, because I don't want to alienate any of the sports in our community. But what if a feasibility assessment talked about that, exactly that, that density of need within the Collingwood boundaries and, you know, cements home the fact that we need, you know, four pads or three plads plus turf or et cetera, et cetera, any of those possibilities. But it also identifies that rock climbing is, you know, I'm using a nondescript sport, is, is a highly sought after sport in, in Town of the Blue Mountains. And so it would be apropos for them to invest in a facility that focuses on that need. We would be distributing resources appropriately. In other words, we wouldn't be building the rock climbing in our facility. We would be distributing that to where it is most, matters the most. And yes, certainly, the, you know, the PRC Master Plan at a very, very high level back in 2019 identified needs we have and will have in the future. So it identified a three pat as being a part of our future. But at a very high level, and with a feasibility assessment to be required to, to complete that understanding, there will be other factors within the Town of the Blue Mountain that determine what their needs are. Doing it together allows us to create a, a good distribution, a recognition of what the needs are in each center. And it potentially puts in the place of not having to compete with our neighbor municipality for that upper tier funding. And in fact, collaborative approaches can actually yield a higher degree of, of support. I'm saying this all in the can and may and could, because I can't predict the future. But I do think that that is, what you just described is exactly why we went, like, we're oversold for ice in Collingwood. And we know in other municipalities neighboring ours, they're not as busy in ice, except by virtue of what we can't supply. And so our, our groups are going there. So if that's what the clear message is from our community through a feasibility study, then we're building for needs of our community. But we're not necessarily building for the needs of another community, because we understand where those needs should live.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, thank you. I was just thinking about the question of, you know, what the major user would be of a sportsplex of some kind. And certainly arenas would be a big part in this community. But I also wanted to mention some of the other communities that have built sportsplex. For example, Bracebridge, I happened to go into theirs several years ago now. So I just looked it up on the website. But just for example, they have three swimming pools, a water slide, different sized meeting rooms, 32 foot indoor climbing wall, and a beach volleyball court, as well as their arena. And certainly, the 101 Sound has arenas on two sides of their sportsplex, which is run by the Y. And so I also wanted to mention, because I don't know if I have before, but I was barely installed as mayor when the YMCA came to visit in my office. And they brought their, you know, I'll say equivalent CEO from Berry, where they're headquartered for, for this region, and someone from their board who lives in Collingwood. And what they wanted to impress on me was that if, when we were at the time of wanting to move forward on some kind of recreation complex, that if we wanted to consider a partner of any kind, they would like to come to the table. They had entered into hundreds of different kinds of agreements across Canada, in many different municipalities, and would be happy to talk about any kind of arrangement that we wanted to talk about. So I'm not promoting that. I'm just saying, there's so many different directions this could go. But I, I see this multi, you know, Murph, whatever we want to call it, community center, as a lot more than arenas. And I think it's part of a healthy community that will be accommodating everyone from, you know, gymnast, people who want to do rock climbing, to swimmers, to, you know, if it's indoor beach, beach volleyball our community wants. Well, just to say, I, I hope it's a large number of recreation activities that we can ultimately accommodate. Because I think, you know, we have a community that's very much focused on health and wellness and would hope for all those things. So anyway, I just had, that's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had good discussion. Are there any other comments? Okay, thank you. I had to stop my line of questioning, but I must say that the questions and the answers that have been supplied have more than answered my, my questions. And I'm extremely supportive of this concept, for all the reasons that have been stated. Clerk Almas, do we have mover and seconder? Yes, we do. Okay. Then I will call the vote. All in favor? Three. And opposed. That's three. So, okay, the motion fails. Okay, thank you. So the mayor and deputy mayor can come back in.
Thank you for taking that for me, Vice Chair Doherty. I appreciate that. So with the conclusion of 6.1, we can now move to 6.3 CCS 202304. It's an agreement for the early termination of the Georgian Triangle Humane Society lease. And I believe it is Executive Director Peg who's going to set us up for this discussion.
Thank you, Chair. I'll provide some introductory comments to the report, but did want to acknowledge that Treasurer Quinlan, Manager McNulty, who's online this evening, and our facilities coordinator Jill Landry have certainly been instrumental in moving this file forward. And they are available as well this evening to answer any questions that the committee may have. So in 2010, the Town and the Georgian Triangle Humane Society negotiated and entered into a land lease agreement. And this enabled the construction of the GTHS owned and operated building on town land at 545 10th Line. The building was constructed by GTHS and was funded primarily through community donations and fundraising. The facility has operated as an animal shelter since that time. An early lease termination agreement is currently being negotiated, as this early termination would be mutually beneficial to both parties. This includes consideration of the building within the staff accommodation planning that's underway, operations planning for the 10th Line campus, which is part of our 2023 budget, is to have a consultant review of that land and facility for best use. And it would also enable the GTHS to invest the contributed funds in a new facility, which is planned to be built in Collingwood. In addition, the early lease termination would help improve traffic flows and vehicle congestion that's currently being experienced on the site. So pending a council approval to move forward with the staff recommendation, contribution of $800,000 would be made by the town to GTHS. And this would equate to the assessed value and takes into consideration a facility condition assessment that was obtained by the town and GTHS of the facility. So thank you, Chair. That's all my introductory comments. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'll first look to the gallery to see if there's anybody wishing to speak to this item specifically. Seeing none, and we have no one that wishes to contribute remotely. So I will put the motion on the floor. The staff report CCS 202304, agreement for the early termination of the Georgian Triangle Humane Society lease be received, and the council approved the execution of the early lease termination agreement with the Georgian Triangle Humane Society as directed, and in a final form acceptable to the executive director, customer, and corporate services, and the town solicitor. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Vice Chair Doherty, Counselor Houston, questions or comments? Who would like to start? Because I know somebody will want to say something. Nobody? Counselor Potts?
Thanks, Chair Jeffrey. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this one. I, I understand it. But, you know, one of the reasons that, that comes up is staff accommodation. And again, that's a hefty amount of money to be putting towards not guaranteeing that, you know, we're going to be putting it to full use. So I need a lot more clarification on what the future plan will be. If it's going to be to put staffing in there. And, you know, we already know we have a lot of buildings that are sitting vacant currently. So I'm going to be looking for more information on that, if I could.
Okay, thank you. So Executive Director Peg, could you respond to that request, please?
Yes, thank you. Through the Chair to Counselor Potts. Staff does have in our plan to bring forward an update to council on the staff accommodation plan. In terms of when that would be feasible, we could certainly do our utmost to try and have additional information in two weeks for the council report. But I would have to speak with Manager McNulty to see if that would be feasible. But certainly, it is our intention to provide additional information. We'll do our best to provide as much as possible as an update to the report for the council meeting.
And just for clarification, our meeting is in one week, correct? This is carrying forward to. So just so everybody's aware, it's one week. Normally, our cycle would be two, but it's going to be one. And then I had another question that I was going to build on top of that, but it will. I guess the question would be, and what we're voting on in here, is that it's simply to allow the Georgian Triangle Humane Society to move on with theirs, and we buy the building. But council's not tied into, or committee tied into where that gets used going forward. At this point, we're simply allowing GTHS out of the lease, and that we have the property in our holdings. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the contribution of $800,000 from the town towards, like, to GTHS to enable us to retain the building for our planning purposes.
Right. Okay. All right. Do you have any follow up, Counselor Potts?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, all right. Deputy Mayor?
Through you, perhaps to Executive Director Peg. You gave a brief explanation of the process kind of through. Do you want to speak a little bit about the $800,000 in regards to, it's a negotiated kind of amount. And, and it was an extensive work by our team. I just maybe thought maybe a little more detail to the public in that regard.
Thank you, Chair. And through to the deputy mayor, I'll actually ask if Manager McNulty's online. The facilities team led quite an extensive review of the facility condition assessment. So he would probably be best able to speak to how that number was landed on. Thank you.
You. Manager McNulty, welcome.
Thank you. Through the Chair to the deputy mayor. The facility condition assessment was done alongside all of the other facility condition assessments that were done for the benefit of asset management, and completed by the same consultant. So we have the same level of detail in that facility condition assessment as we have for all of our other facilities. And so the, the assessment provided a replacement value for all of the individual components of the building, including the servicing that goes to the building. We then took that detailed listing. And there were some items that needed to be upgraded at this current time to, just because of the age of them. So we deducted those. And then deducted essentially everything that was not going to be of use to the town. So we ended up with a depreciated value of all of the assets that do have value for the town moving forward. So essentially, the building shell, the mechanical systems, the and whatever of the internal components can be reused, such as washrooms, kitchen areas, and so on. What we would be envisioning is the installation of separate offices or reconfiguration of the space to make it suitable for town use going forward.
And I appreciate that. I know some of that detail you just went over, we did talk about when we made the decision to allow staff to negotiate with GTS about this. So it was helpful to, I think, to get that. So it was helpful to, I think, get that out there. I know within the report, it's given a general assessment of what you expect that the cost could be if it is going to be put to municipal use. But I do look forward to the additional information for next week in regards to plans in that regard and how it fits. But I understand just what Chair Jeffrey has already mentioned is that this puts it into our holdings, not into into actual use until we can determine what appropriate use is for it. So. And the last thing I'd just say is this noted in the property that, or in the report, that there does tend to be some safety issues involving the two organizations sharing that common use of the parking lot and entrance ways and that. So there's that element of it as well to be considered when we're considering whether or not to accept this offer.
That's it for your, okay, Maryam?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One is, I just wanted to confirm that all that we're being asked to vote on is whether to terminate early the lease that the Humane Society has on that property? And that we're not making any decision on the future use of those lands?
I think that was the question I asked and that Counselor Potts asked. And I think the Executive Director responded that all we're voting on tonight is the release, the purchase, and putting it into our holdings.
Okay. So for me, I don't need to have, like, I understand from, you know, updates we'd had previously that staff is working on some kind of master accommodation plan for our town business. And for me, I don't need to see that next week to make a decision on whether we should terminate the lease with the Humane Society early. Because my second question is, what happens to the Humane Society if we don't do this? I mean, they're counting on that $800,000 for their building campaign. And I also assume they have to keep paying their lease for the land. But anyway, what's the impact on them if we turn this down? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. I will actually ask Treasurer Quinlan to comment on this one, please.
Treasurer Quinlan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mayor Hamlin. So I don't, you know, pretend to know what GTHS's financial capabilities are right now. They certainly have a long way to go and maybe a bit of a short time to get there, not to use that term too clear. But they are, they certainly would be in a better position if they had the $800,000. I think today, you know, through our discussions amongst staff, Manager McNulty and Fleet Coordinator Jill Landry, the three of us have been discussing with them for quite some time and trying to really come up with something, not just on a monetary basis, but also so that it benefits both the town and GTHS in terms of timing. So I think they're going to have quite a bit of fundraising to do over the next couple of years. Does the $800,000 help? Absolutely. But does that mean that's the end for them? Definitely not. This is quite a big facility that they're planning on building, and the fact that it's staying in the town of Collingwood is favorable to us, too. From a lease standpoint, the lease agreement is essentially nil, I should say. So GTHS does not currently pay rent to the town. They paid a certain amount, but they did pay for that building to be constructed in full with absolutely no contribution for the town, or from the town, I should say. So I think, just to clarify, there isn't, you know, the lease agreement is there, but it's a nominal fee. But the expectation was that they would build the building. And now we're at a position where we kind of need the room, don't kind of, we do need the room according to the accommodation plan, and they need something bigger than what they have. And on top of that, we have a lot of really difficult transportation patterns because of the location of the facility.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, what would be the early termination date if this is approved?
Could you remind us of the date in the report, please?
If I may, Madam Chair, I believe it is 2025, June 2025, with the option to extend to the end of 2025. But I'm sure Manager McNulty knows it better. He's got his hand up there.
McNulty, could you provide, please?
The early termination date that is currently in the final agreement that's being developed is December 31st, 2026, with the option to be able to extend that by 180 days. Recent discussion this week suggested that they may be able to move that date forward by a matter of months, but that's where it sits right now. The other thing that we've asked the lawyers to consider is if the GTHS is ahead of schedule and move out earlier, can we move up the early termination date?
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hamlin. So our motion tonight, though, is simply to approve the early lease termination and however those dates change, staff will look after, because it's to the satisfaction of the Executive Director and the town solicitor. So that's all good. All right. Oh, Executive Director has a comment, and then we have Counselor Houston.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, and I misspoke, and thank you for confirming the next council dates in a week. I don't think it will be possible to have a detailed report in that timeframe. So I just want to be, make that clear when council's making the vote this evening, that the likelihood of having a detailed accommodations report in a week is quite low.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor Potts is specific on a
Yeah, just to follow up on that, three, Chair. And I'm in support of the, with the GTHS and with the lease, and I do look forward to that report. And I wasn't expecting it within the week. I mean, we can give some time, but I do, I do look forward to having that come back. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Houston.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, and you may have touched on it just a second ago. I was just looking for clarification of what would happen if we voted to agree on this early lease termination and the GTS, GTHS's timelines for building and fundraising extend beyond that 180-day extension.
Manager McNulty, would you like to respond to that, please?
Excuse me, that's a, another question that we have provided our comments to the lawyer on. Our preference is that, is that the termination date plus the 180 days is sort of the deadline. And so we need to be able to, assuming that we were going to use that building as part of our accommodations, we need to be able to plan for that. And so our preference that we've put in front of the lawyers is that it's, becomes a firm date, and essentially, they have to move out somewhere. But that could be still subject to some negotiation within the agreement.
For December of 2026, plus 180 days, you would have to come back to council for further direction to do another agreement, correct? If we sign based on what you've reported to us? Yes. All right, good. Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. Perhaps I'm confused on the, on the staff report here, but it says, under the analysis, it says, payment, payment terms will be as follows, 25%. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's broken down into, into four 25% chunks. But further into the report, it is broken down as the town payments would break down as $200,000 in 2024, $400,000 in 2025, and $200,000 in 2026. Unless I'm missing something here, that's two different things, is it not?
Would that be a Treasurer Quinlan?
Yeah, I'm not sure who I should have addressed that, too, but
We'll ask Treasurer Quinlan to start, and then we'll figure out if
Like I said, I might be totally wrong on that, but I just want clarity on it, if possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just taking a look at the report, because I did review it, but I don't recall that there was two separate amounts there. There is, it is a graduated payment plan, so since we want to make sure, you know, that they have the encouragement to get out on time as well. So their final payments aren't until after they actually leave the building. So it should have, it is the 25, I believe, is still the 25, four times, the 25% four times, so $200,000 each time. And sorry, where did you see that it was
Further downward, it says, sorry, further downward, it says financial impacts, there are actually only three payments in there. So one of 200, one of 400, and one of another 200.
Oh.
Confused on something?
When I read that, and the treasurer confirmed, it's by year. So two payments will occur within one budget period, so that'll be 400,000. So it's 200,000 in one budget period, 400,000 in another, and then 200 in the last.
Yeah, now that I look at that, you're correct. So we've got one in 2024, but there's two points of payment in 2025, at least given their construction schedule now, right? And then the third would be 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions on the report? I'm going to sever these out for ease, and we'll vote on receiving the report, first of all. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And then to the second part, to approve the early termination of the lease at the, in a form acceptable to the Executive Director and the town solicitor. So all those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. All right, so 6.4 is the customer service standards policy. And again, Executive Director Pegg, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. So I will provide some introductory comments on this report and then turn it over to Manager Maziac, who will provide an overview of the proposed standards. So providing exceptional customer service is certainly a key priority of the town, and we're continuously looking for opportunities to improve and enhance our processes, and of course, the policies and the procedures that support them. In 2019, the town did create a centralized customer service division. And in 2020, the division introduced standards that were applicable to the customer service team only. In 2023, the town implemented a customer service management software and then proceeded to rebrand the centralized customer service team to Service Collingwood. They have been exceptionally busy. So before the committee this evening, our proposed customer service standards that are recommended to apply to Service Collingwood and town employees across all departments. And there are some caveats in the proposed policy. And the standards are also recommended to apply to members of council, advisory committees, and boards, but that's only is highlighted within the proposed policy. So there are specific sections that speak to members of council. The introduction of these corporate-wide standards is part of our customer service evolution, and it provides us with an opportunity to provide greater consistency across the organization and support quality and timely resolution to customer inquiries. And it certainly enhances our ability to report statistics and data to council and the community. And of course, these standards are also aimed to address some of the feedback that we've received from the community around some inconsistency, depending on the channel that the inquiry comes in, and also to make sure that we're supporting council in the inquiries that they receive directly. And then this report's also intended to be aligned with Director Almus's report this evening on staff and council relations, and I'm sure Director Almus will highlight some of those changes and how they relate to this. It is recommended that the standards in this proposed policy wouldn't come into effect until January 1st of 2024. And this would allow us the opportunity to ensure appropriate training of our staff, alignment with the town's customer service software, and of course, public communication. So with that, I am pleased to turn it over to Manager Maziac, who will provide a brief overview of the proposed standards. And we do have a slide that highlights those as well.
Excellent. Welcome.
Very much. So thank you, Executive Director Pegg, and of course, Chair and members of the committee for having me here tonight. So as mentioned, we have the one slide, just to kind of review, give you a visual over what we're proposing here in the customer service standards. So in the first column, you'll see the various channels where folks can access service. And then the subsequent columns shows for response times of Service Collingwood or directly with departments and divisions. So you'll notice as you go through, the Service Collingwood timelines are just a little bit quicker, as we do have dedicated customer service ambassadors that are available to help. So again, I don't know if you guys want me to go through each of the timelines, or it's enough to read them on there. As always, though, our service ambassadors, we, we're not the experts on everything, so that's where the departments and divisions do come in to support any more complicated questions or questions involving expertise. So again, you'll see the breakdown there. Reminding myself of my notes here, I know Executive Director Pegg covered quite a bit for me already. I just wanted to share, actually, on a related note, we mentioned the software. We have launched our customer service software, and it has been in place since the end of March. We are taking a phased approach with regards to getting very detailed service request information through the portal right now. So right now, the idea is that we have information to support specific inquiries around very much our public works and parks and maintenance-related items. We're building on that for folks to hopefully get self-serve help first, if not being able to submit a service request. In the meantime, though, we do have an option for folks to submit a general question as well. So all of these are tracked through our Service Collingwood portal if they come in through that channel. Otherwise, of course, we do have the other channels available through phone, email, and whatnot. So perhaps I'll turn it over if there are any questions.
All right, thank you for that. There's no one in the gallery who wishes to have input, and there's no one remotely, so we'll just go right to putting the motion on the floor so we can have council input. The staff report CCS 2023 03, customer service standards policy be received, and that council approved the customer service standards policy effective January 1st, 2024. Could I have a mover and a second here? Counselor Potts, deputy mayor. All right, questions, comments? Deputy Mayor?
A quick question through you. Do you see developing a frequently asked question based on the types of questions you're getting? Will that develop over time?
Yes, sorry if I didn't say that very well through the chair. We are, as I mentioned, focused, we had focused on a few divisions initially. So for example, on the public work side, you know, we have some good content around, like, traffic lights, streetlights, potholes, sidewalk repair, that type of content right now. And on the park side, again, how are parks and, you know, memorial trees and benches, for example, or trail maintenance, how those programs work online? So we are building that as we go. That's kind of in a phased implementation. We tried to target the most common requests first, and we'll be building that repository as we go. So absolutely, that's on the radar.
Just a follow-up, Chair.
Yes.
I'll just, I'll just say, and sorry if I didn't catch it right when, when you're presenting there. But that's, I do fully support the Service Collingwood portal. I think it's a great tool. And as it's developed and you get into that situation where even it can be electronically helped and relieve some pressure off the staff, that's, that's great. So that's, thank you for the report.
Any other questions or comments? All right, that's great. Seeing none, I just want to say what terrific results I've had for the people that I have referred to our customer service. It's excellent. So I guess my same comment would be here is, given the recommendations as to the standards, it's not implying, maybe setting us up for a budget request, but it's, we're not agreeing to any kind of financial implication through this in terms of that. Just to confirm, please.
That is correct, Chair. There are no financial implications with the drafted policy. Certainly, if we found through the implementation that there were capacity concerns regarding staff regarding staffing or technology, et cetera, we would report back to council.
In the normal course. All right, perfect. All right, so I'll sever these out, too. We'll vote on the first part to receive the report. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And then on the second part, to approve the Customer Service Standards Policy, all those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so 6.5, C 2023-17, is an updated council staff relations policy, and I believe Clerk Almus is going to set us up on this, please.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation. So together with the original review of the council staff relations policy that was put in place, I believe it was 2019, following the results of the Collingwood Judicial Inquiry, it was actually a satisfactory review of our current policy at that time, but they highlighted a couple of their key best practice council staff relation policies for our review and consideration. So it has been on our agenda to review since 2022. And so this is a culmination of what our review and research has led us to. Our existing policy is a HR policy, was drafted by our HR department, and it was recommended that, together with the work that our HR division had done, together with the governance lens that clerk services and legislative service could provide, would provide the ultimate policy for council's consideration. So if we move on to our first slide, so the new policy, the existing policy, D 21, is actually a six-page slide, or a six-page document that identifies the, basically, the communications, the interactions, the structure that's set up for council and staff, and how we interact during our daily operations and administration moving forward. And one of the highlights that we wanted to consider is, when we implemented a number of changes from the JI, we went to, for example, our code of conduct went from a 10-page document to a 20-page document. And so we wanted to have something that was much more succinct, still utilizing what we had in place. And we found that there was even in our existing policy, a number of areas that were duplicated. So basically, we had a revision of the policy statement, the scope. We added a principles statement as well, and some of the key principles that we'd want to adhere to in the policy. So with all that preamble commentary, I'll get back into my presentation here. So following legal and expert review, the existing Town of Collingwood Council Staff Relations Policy has been identified as a best practice, particularly with respect to communication and information sharing. However, the JI did note additional enhancements and clarifications that were recommended. The town staff have provided the updates to the existing policy, including details, details, including individual roles, supports the spirit of a positive working relationship between council and staff, identifies that both staff and council are professionals who govern and direct the town in different valuable ways and are independent, clearly identifies that the town functions best when council staff are respectful of each other's rules, and sets informational discussions when appropriate at the starting point to resolve differences. And so into a brief review of some of the updates, the policy statement was updated. It has become more succinct. So the policy statement is, "The provision of public service excellence and effective governance demands, depends on a culture of trust and respect, including positive two-way communications between council and staff, acting in accordance to the rules as set out in the Municipal Act, timely information for decision-makers, and making the best use of resources." The purpose has been shortened as well. A lot of the previous items that were contained in the purpose were actually found throughout the document as well. We want to keep it as straightforward as possible. So this policy is to guide the nature of professional business interactions between members of council and staff, and provide a framework for that relationship. If we go to, sorry, Slide 3, I'm kind of moving along quickly, one more slide. So number three here, the scope is enhanced, 3.1 is what was there before, and we've added 3.2. This was a best practice recommendation that was provided by Justice or Commissioner Morocco. And this is found in the city of Vons, I believe, the city of Brampton, the city of Ottawa. And that was something that our current plan was lacking, that this policy shall be applied wherever and whenever interactions occur between council staff, including onsite or offsite, as well as during and outside regular business hours, and via all channels, including person, in-person, electronic meetings, via written correspondence, email, messaging tools, and texting. Next slide. We have added principles that guide this policy, and they include 4.1 is a municipal governance excellence, while ensuring that council staff have the tools needed to deliver their duties or jobs well, obviously depending on whether you're a politician or you are an employee, while supporting and building a culture of trust and respect between council, staff, and the public, supporting the efficient and effective use of town resources, including human resources, in a transparent and accountable manner. The second principle was about open and clear communication. Open lines of communication are essential. Members of council staff should feel comfortable speaking to one another about their work, both formally and informally. However, formal communication channels exist to raise and manage operational and administrative issues and should be respected. The third principle was about equality and transparency. We want to ensure that throughout the policy, and you would have identified it, it's consistent with our customer service policy, is we want to ensure that as a member of council and a member of public, you're equal to the same treatment, and that members of the public shouldn't feel that they need to necessarily have a member of council act on their behalf. However, council, if they feel that there is something that needs to be escalated, then they can go to council to do that, or council could attend with them should they have any questions or feel uncomfortable on how they approach, approach the town, depending on whether concerns are. So 4.3, the equity and transparency, only council as a whole has the authority to direct staff to carry out specific tasks or functions and require equal access to information for governance decisions. The town administration, under the direction of the CAO, serves council as a whole, and the combined interests of all members of councils expressed through the resolutions of council, where appropriate specific roles for the mayor, deputy mayor, committee chairs, or others are set out in the town's procedural bylaw, the municipal act, or other public policies. And the last principle added was regarding respectful workplace. And again, that's consistent with a number of our other policies we have in place with the town. The town is committed to a positive, healthy, and safe workplace in which every person is treated with respect, dignity. Incivility, harassment, and discrimination is not tolerated, condoned, nor ignored. No member of council or staff shall make comments that disparage or harm the reputation of the town, council, or coworkers. Next slide, our definitions have been updated, and that's pretty self-explanatory. We've included provision in there for a definition of Service Collingwood, since that's a relatively new term that we have in place now with the new program that's in place by customer service. Next slide, number six, refined reporting relationships and joint rules of council and staff. This has been added to demonstrate the commitment to accountability and transparency. Another, the remaining bullets address leadership, confidentiality, impartiality, and the exercise of our duties, enhancing public understanding of the political process, upholding council decisions as a whole, and seeking to achieve and maintain an environment of mutual respect and trust. Number seven is clarification is provided for processes for inquiries. So again, definitions for routine and non-routine matters have been clarified. We had routine and non-routine matters within our previous document. And their staff felt, and since the policy hasn't been in place for, this is the fourth year, have noticed that there is opportunity where a member of council should be able to ask a question that may not require being copied to all, but there's processes that have been in place regarding copying all members of council that could be conceived or perceived as questionable in accordance with the open meetings rules of the Municipal Act. So in clarification with our lawyers regarding that piece is, as an example, if a member of council has received their agenda package and have a question regarding a staff report that is in their agenda, and you ask council, or you ask staff for further clarification, it currently is our practice to respond back to all the information inquiries that was provided in there, and then copy all members of council. However, in discussion with legal regarding this, they have indicated that clarification from staff can be provided, but if the member of council brings up new information that was not originally considered within the report, additional research or information should not be provided as part of the response, because that is taking direction from one member of council. So the ideal approach is, it's fine to provide the heads-up to staff that you'll be asking a question that is going to involve a different thought process, and maybe something that wasn't considered. And should council as a whole decide that they think that that is valuable before they make a decision, then council can choose to refer it back to staff to have additional information. And again, any responses should be as clear as appropriate to address the council questions. However, when the information comes back to council and is presented publicly, the staff that is presenting that information, be it department head, the CAO, a manager, or another staff member, present information, they should provide any additional clarification that was provided to council in the email, in an email that was provided in advance of the meeting, just to ensure that the public is aware of that same information that helped this council make their decision on how they were voting. So that's something that I think is one of the best changes and upgrades to this policy is to ensure that standard is provided. It's also, we've included in this process for inquiries, an appendix, Appendix 2, that actually provides some samples and examples of situations that may come up that will help clarify the process for council. We did originally have the commentary of the examples actually right in the document, but it was felt that that was getting too complicated, so we decided to pull them out and make them an appendix. Another item that's important for the process for inquiries is, actually, we might as well go to the next slide, is in addition to the inclusion of Appendix 2, we included Appendix 1. This is a best practice that was identified by the city of Brampton, and further clarification on what becomes a political record or constituent record that you may have heard us refer to as well, and records that become a corporate document. So that's something, too, that's really important for not only council, but the public to be aware of, that correspondence sent to a member of council does not automatically become a record that can be FOYed. But if that record becomes within the realm of staff for further review, it could become FOY-able. So it's important to seek permission from the member of the public if they wish to have their information shared with staff. And what we are recommending in this policy as the ideal approach, if that's the case, and a member of the public does have concerns, but obviously, it's a valuable question that a member of the public has, is to anonymize the request. So you may summarize the concerns that you'd received from a member of the public and forward it to a town staff for a response that way, and vice versa. And that would be how staff would respond to the inquiry as well. So if staff are approached by a member of council, and this is part of the mutual respect conversation, sometimes there's members of council that, you know, feel that, you know, maybe they should have known the answer before, and they don't want it circulated back to everybody that I didn't know the answer, but it is a valuable reminder to everybody. So now, what we're suggesting is that staff, you know, if that is a concern, that we anonymize it, send it back to all members of council saying that we had received a question regarding whatever the item was, just so council still has that same information. So those are big changes that we have.
Good work, big summary. So at the agenda clearing meeting this morning, I asked if it would, well, before that, I asked if it was possible to have the red line tracking version circulated to us. Staff had a really busy day, so we didn't get it until maybe 10 minutes before the start of the meeting. So I'm proposing that if there are any questions that we have right now, but again, I'll pass the gavel, or if someone else would like to. I would like to defer this for another meeting. This is a really critically important document for us, and I think we should have the time to really review it carefully with the red line vision. So if there's something, you know, willing, but I would like to have, I think it would be valuable if people already have questions and comments that we talk about them tonight. So with that, I'll first, there's no one in the gallery for public, there's no one remotely. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor, and it's that staff report, C 2023-17, Updated Council Staff Relations Policy Be Received, and that council approved the updated corporate policy entitled Council Staff Relations Policy as presented herein. And I ask for a mover and a seconder, please. Counsel Ring, Counsel Perry, and I'm going to sever them, and I'm going to ask to vote on receiving the report. All those in favor of receiving, and that is carried unanimously. And then we'll move into questions or comments you have currently on the second piece, which is with respect to the policy. Is there anything you have at this point, or you want to hold them until you've been able to read the red line? I'll pass the gavel to Vice Chair Doherty, and I will move that we defer the consideration of the updated corporate policy entitled Council Staff Relations Policy to our next committee of the whole meeting. Sir Second?
Thank you, sir. Yes, there is a second, zip. Yes, so we have a seconder, I think it was Counsel Houston. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion to defer? And that, that is carried unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so that takes us to 6.6, C 2023-19, Consideration of Additional Advisory Committees and Council Representation on Advisory Committees. And I think this is Clerk Almus again.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. I'll do a very quick introduction, but this is a collective effort over multiple departments. So I will note that in consideration of moving this forward, we wanted to look at a number of outstanding resolutions that council has requested staff reports on, and that's why we've consolidated them in this one report. So we'll get into a little bit of background of what we have, and then each department will take on their specific items with regards to the recommendation. And then Deputy Clerk Dahl will finalize the piece with respect to the council resolution for council member involvement on advisory committees.
Okay. Perfect. All right, so again, no public input from the gallery or remotely?
So if you would like Becky to start going through.
Oh, sorry, yes.
And then we got Nicole Yardy, as well as.
I thought you, that was your presentation for everybody. I thought, wow.
Well, if there's no questions, they really don't have to go through.
All right, no, let's have staff do their thing. Take it away there, Deputy Clerk Dahl.
All right, thank you, and good evening, and thank you for providing me this opportunity to address the committee of the whole this evening. In February 2023, council directed staff to prepare reports to consider the establishment of an Environment and Climate Change Committee, a committee for the purposes of audit and finance matters, and to consider the addition of a member of council to each advisory committee. In reviewing the requests, staff looked at the overall purpose of an advisory committee being to provide advice and recommendations to council and/or staff on a specific mandate established through a terms of reference breach committee. Advisory committees are established based on a requirement under legislation or for the purpose of funding or grant opportunities that would support a program or service being provided by the municipality, or to align and assist in accomplishing the goals identified in the community-based strategic plan, or to assist in enhancing a program or service being provided by the municipality. And as Sarah has already mentioned, this report is a collaboration with finance and corporate community services teams, and we will be dividing the presentation amongst the groups with Executive Director Peg speaking next to the Environment and Climate Change Committee request.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. So when examining the Creation of Environment and Climate Change Committee staff, Committee, staff considered the purpose and scope of the proposed committee, the current progress on the corporate and community climate action plans, and the makeup of the already existing committees and task force. And reviewing these factors, we do not currently recommend the creation of a designated Environment and Climate Change Committee. Today, we are very fortunate to have many local environmental and climate action focused organizations in Collingwood, and they currently act as advocacy groups to council and actively engage with staff on key initiatives. We recognize that the creation of the proposed committee could provide additional opportunities for discussion, but noted during the staff review, the broad applicability of environment and climate change in all that we do. This combined with the current progress on our local climate action plans and our existing active engagement with local environmental organizations, staff recommend that we integrate environmental and climate change considerations into our decision making processes in general to help facilitate a paradigm shift to a municipality-wide culture of sustainability. To help facilitate this, staff are recommending that environment and climate change be incorporated into all of the terms of reference of existing and future boards, committees, and task force, task forces. And we also recommend that annual training at a minimum occur to address special matters related to the environment and climate change, and how the proposed climate lens assessment tool could be utilized and applied to the decision-making process on those committees and boards. And the training certainly isn't, wouldn't be intended to make members experts, but rather help ensure that they have the right tools to apply to the decisions that are in front of them. And this training would be facilitated either by staff directly, so by our climate change specialists, or by other specialists within our community. And with that, I will turn it over to Treasurer Quinlan to provide the overview on the Finance and Audit Committee.
Thank you, Director Peg and Deputy Clerk Dahl. So at this time, staff are not recommending the creation of an audit and finance committee also, largely because given the time that we're in with a pilot committee of the whole structure, and we recommend that the financial oversight of the town stays within the Committee of the Whole, so all members of council are able to have their opinions laid. Staff have made this recommendation largely because we looked at the responsibilities of the auditors, as well as staff and council's role for municipal finances. We considered the scope and the extent of the independent audit and the review of internal controls and policies and procedures. We also looked at the role and the education and the expertise of staff that we currently have, and the function and implementation of our independent auditor as well. It's also true that over the next few months, we're going to have many updates that will be considered over the, for, from a financial policy perspective. One of the bigger ones is the Long Term Strategic Financial Plan and the second phase of the Asset Management Plan, which will include those noncore assets that we keep talking about. And staff feel that it's really important that all of council be involved when developing these very critical strategies. And additionally, just as part of the normal course of business, whenever a report does come from the treasurer's office or the deputy treasurer for that matter, these reports are, include information with respect to the policies that are already in place for for council. And if there was an opportunity, or if there were situations where a member of council may have concerns or wish to further delve into that policy, there's always that opportunity to do so and ask staff to come forward with additional information at that time. What we did think, though, was that in order to provide an alternative option, we were going to recommend to better facilitate the needs of council to direct questions to the auditor, is that an annual meeting be included each year prior to the financial statements being presented at Committee of the Whole or being presented to the public. This would provide an opportunity for the mayor, the deputy mayor, staff, and the auditor to have fulsome and in-depth conversations with regards to the financial statements. It doesn't mean that those same, that same information won't be discussed and divulged at the Committee of the Whole meeting when we do present them, but it just offers staff and members of council an additional opportunity to sort of delve into the questions that may be pressing at that time. So I think now I'm handing it back to Deputy Clerk Dahl. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Quinlan. That's right. So I'll be reviewing the council member appointments to advisory committee section of the staff report. And further to council's request to consider the addition of members of council to each of the advisory committees, staff have assessed the current advisory committee structure, past practice, and community restructuring, and options for consideration. Council currently has four advisory committees that all report into the Committee of the Whole, providing recommendations within their field of expertise to Committee of the Whole and Council for consideration. These four committees are the Accessibility Advisory Committee, which is required by legislation, the Collingwood Heritage Committee, which is also required by legislation, the Museum Advisory Committee, which is required for funding opportunities to the museum, and the Trails and Active Transportation Advisory Committee, which is required to assist in fulfillment of program and service delivery. All advisory committees are currently made up of volunteers that reside within our community that have expressed an interest, provide lived experience, can provide work experience, and or education to the mandate of the committee which they are appointed to. Each committee also has a designated staff resource who provides them with specific training to the committee resources and information on items for consideration, and provide guidance to the committee as well. Department heads are also required to attend on a periodic basis for committees within their portfolio oversight. When undertaking the review of the advisory committee structure for this request, three options were considered. The first one is to remain status quo with no council appointee on advisory committees. The second was appoint a council representative to all or some advisory committees. And the third is, which we are recommending, is to amend the procedural bylaw to allow for all council members to act as ex officio members to the advisory committees. It is more recognized in smaller municipalities that council members or reps be appointed to advisory committees due to the part of difficulty in recruitment, small community memberships, lack of experience, under municipal government structures that are in place for that municipality. During the governance review in 2015, led by the CIO at the time, it was recommended that council members should not be appointed to advisory committees, particularly if advisory committee recommendations were vetted through Committee of the Whole or standing committee governance process, allowing for council and public input prior to the approval of any recommendations of the advisory committees. Strengths and weaknesses of council representation on advisory committees were explored and described within the staff report. And to the recommendation option of an ex officio member, the procedural bylaw currently provides that only the mayor can be an ex officio member to all committees, boards, and task forces without voting privileges being applied. An ex officio member is a member of a board, notably a board or committee, who is part of a body by virtue of holding another office. In this case, it would be council. To recognize the strengths identified in having council representation on advisory committees and being cognizant of council's current commitments, amending the procedural bylaw to allow any member of council to attend an advisory committee in an ex officio capacity without voting privileges is being recommended. Alternatively, council may choose that ex officio members have voting privileges. If approved, the use of ex officio capacities will be monitored by staff, and should we feel that there's conflict arise or is felt that too many members are attending a specific meeting type and causing influence to the recommendations made by the committee, the matter can be revisited and for the recommendations provided, potentially limiting the number of members that attend each committee meeting at the time. So our recommendations before you this evening are that council designate staff to appropriately integrate environment, climate change, and sustainability considerations into the terms of references for the advisory committees and task forces established by council, and that the mayor and deputy mayor in their capacities pursuant pursuant to the Municipal Act and procedural bylaw be required to participate in an annual meeting between the auditor and key staff to review the audited financial statements in detail before they are presented to Committee of the Whole and Council, and that the procedural bylaw be amended to permit any member of council to participate in an ex officio member to any of the advisory committees. And I'd just like to thank you on behalf of our group for providing us with this opportunity to speak with this evening, and we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you for hanging in for so long as well to be able to assist us. Okay, so still no public input in the gallery, nothing remotely. So I will now put the motion on the floor, and that staff report, see 202319, consideration of one additional advisory committees, and two, council representation on advisory committees be received, and that council delegate staff to appropriately integrate environment, climate change, and sustainability considerations into the terms of references of advisory committees and task force established by council, and that the mayor, as chief executive officer and deputy mayor, in their capacity pursuant to the Municipal Act and procedural bylaw, be requested to participate in the annual meeting between the auditor and key staff to review the audited financial statements in detail before being presented to the Committee of the Whole slash council, and that the procedural bylaw be amended to permit any member of council to participate as an ex officio member of any advisory committee. Can I have a mover and a secondor? Counselor Houston and Counselor Potts. So I'm going to sever these, obviously. So as long as the mover and the secondor are okay to remain there on all parts. All right. So we'll vote on the first one, that the report be received. All those in favor. That is carried unanimously. Thank you. So the next up is the integration of environment, climate change, and sustainability considerations into the TORS. Are there any questions or comments with respect to that recommendation?
I like the recommendation because it means that the climate change and sustainability should be part of everything we do. Every committee should have as its terms of reference, consideration of those issues. I think we have evolved. Our staff, you know, are now very familiar with our, what the requirements are for climate change. They've started measuring the amount of emissions from our different buildings. We are so far ahead than we were just even a year or two ago. So I don't feel like we've got to come up with a committee that's going to give us guidance. I do agree, there's a lot of really experienced groups in the community who are giving us advice on different aspects. And then if we can build this into everything we do as suggested here, I would be happy. Thank you.
Vice Chair Doherty.
Thank you, Chair. And I guess I was one member of council that was very earnestly wanting to see this report come forward. I'll speak first to the Environment and Climate Change piece. I am supportive of staff recommendation that a climate change lens should be incorporated or could be incorporated into the terms of reference of our various committees. That makes sense. It certainly is the perspective that we are taking as a town as a whole. But I think with regard to the committee, Environment and Climate Change Committee piece, I personally did not envision that it would be a separate committee. My thought was that a member of council would be added to the existing Greener Collingwood Committee, which right now consists of three staff, one member of CCAT, and one member of the public. And I think that because there's so many initiatives that are being explored, that are not being explored by any other committee, and therefore, it's, it's an independent piece of work, and it will inform the work of other committees, that it would be advantageous to council as a whole if one member of council were appointed to that committee. A slightly different perspective than what's been presented in the staff report. And then with regard to council representation on various.
We're only going to speak to the one item with respect to the environment, climate change for this point.
Okay.
Okay. So you have everything? So I get everything for that one?
Yep.
Okay, so I guess maybe through to the appropriate staff member, was that scenario considered with contemplated within your process to come up with the recommendation?
Thank you, Chair, and through to Counselor Doherty. So I just want to confirm that the committee you're referencing is the Tamarack team? I'm not aware, and I'll look at Clerk Almas of a Greener Collingwood Advisory Committee of Council. We have an internal green team, which is only staff. We have the Collingwood Climate Action Team, among others, within the community. And then there's the Tamarack team that's doing the work to support the Community Climate Action Plan. Is that the committee you're referencing or the team?
Yes, sorry. And I thought it was the Greener Collingwood who are implementing the Tamarack Institute's program. So yeah, same, same basic committee, different name, different title.
Okay, thank you. I do believe that our climate change specialist, Nicole Yardy, is on the line, and she's done a lot of the work, if not all, behind the formation of the Tamarack Institute program. And if I may, Chair, I'll ask for her to comment on that. Hi, Nicole.
Hi. Good afternoon, and thank you through Chair Jeffrey to Counselor Doherty's question. I'll just first clarify, there's three different climate change groups or teams that have kind of come up. So there's the Collingwood Climate Action Team, CCAT, who is our local volunteer and charity-run organization. We do have a Greener Collingwood internal staff team. We're about 10 internal staff members participate in kind of small-scale corporate initiatives such as recycling less single-use plastics. And then I think the team that Counselor Doherty is referring to is the Tamarack team. So that's a program we're going through with the Tamarack Institute, and it's a 10-month learning journey from February to November of 2023. Right now, three staff members sit on that team, one member of CCAT and one member of the public. It is a restricted team based on the Tamarack's system, but after the 10 months, we can share the learnings with council, and we can look to see what future, what kind of system we can put in place to move forward with that same team and expand it to more people as we work through the corporate, sorry, the Community Climate Action Plan. I hope that helps.
You very much. I think that should have clarified it for Counselor Doherty.
Sort of. So now I'm a bit confused because there is reference to the activity under the the Tamarack initiative, but then there is also reference to additional environmental initiatives currently underway, which Creation National Asset, ROMET, excuse me, excuse me, Tree Canopy and Pollinator Protection Plans, and so on. So unless I'm completely misinterpreting this, I, I saw this as an, as an ongoing function of a, the staff and community climate action teams' ongoing work. And it, I, excuse me, it was my thought that it would be advantageous for all of council if a member of council was on that team. So I, I'm.
So if I can clarify then, because I think there isn't. So if I can clarify then, because I think there isn't anything that exists to put a member of council on as the system is now. So you would probably then have to be in favor of creating a separate environment committee.
Okay. So my apologies because I misinterpreted what various functions were being undertaken right now with regard to the climate action. So then going back to my original remarks, that I would definitely support adding a climate lens to all of the existing committees.
Anybody else have comments specific to this one? Just because I initiated it, I'll just speak to it briefly. I'm okay where it's going. My prob, I mean, we definitely, we add lenses, and we need to be looking through all those lenses in everything we do to provide consistency. I was concerned in some of the reports tonight, such as even the arts feasibility, that under climate change, it said not applicable, under accessibility, it said not applicable. Well, I beg to differ. I think we need that lens everywhere, every time. And so my only problem in the case of climate change, we kind of have a buck stops here, I'm assuming, with Nicole Yardi as a staff member. My problem was sometimes spreading things out between all. If the buck doesn't stop somewhere, it gets lost, or it gets less attention in one area than the other. So who monitors that going forward once we spread it out? Executive Director.
Thank you. So to the Chair. So currently, climate change falls within the Fleet and Facilities Team. Overall accountability would have, like most things, fall with the C A O, but with the Executive Director. And certainly, I would work closely with Director Almas if we, if and when we implement this lens to the committees to make sure that there was an accountability structure that we were comfortable with. But I would say, at the end of the day, the buck stops with me and the C A O.
Okay. All right, that's great. Okay, so if there's no further comments, then we will vote on this piece regarding appropriately integrating environment, climate change, and sustainability considerations into the T O Rs. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you. With respect to that the mayor as chief executive officer with respect, and the deputy mayor with respect to the recommendation, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak to this first, because I know you brought it too?
Yes, thank you. And it does make reference to the deputy mayor position, so I did want to. I think I'll ask for one kind of clarification in that regard. It definitely speaks to the role of the mayor as CEO. Is there something in the, again, through you two, probably Clerk Almas, is there something in the municipal act or procedural bylaw that is the reasoning behind the inclusion of the deputy mayor in this particular case to meet with the auditor?
Clerk Almas?
Thank you through Chair Jeffrey to the deputy mayor. I support this concept because the deputy mayor, even though it's not a specific position as noted in the municipal act, it is a position that's set up through the incorporation of the County of Simcoe. And when they establish Callingwood as a municipality, that we have a deputy mayor. So it's known that a deputy mayor generally, unless it's provided otherwise within the procedural bylaw or any other municipal policy, has, is the backup to the mayor. Equally as compensation, the mayor is provided more compensation, the deputy mayor is provided more compensation than council members, counselors are as well. I felt that it was a prudent choice to, rather than have one individual, to have two people. Obviously, if a member couldn't make it, the mayor or the deputy mayor, that at least one of them would be present. There are also the ones that are acting, in particular, the mayor, but in the absence of the mayor, as the spokesperson. So if there's a question regarding audited financial statements after such presentations, that it is generally the mayor that acts as the spokesperson. So it is good that they have more intimate or familiar knowledge of the financial statements. And again, that best practice that the deputy would be equally aware, in addition to any other comments that the treasurer might have had in making that recommendation.
Treasurer Quinlan?
Yeah, she's giving you the thumbs up. Oh, I think the clerk covered it all. Thank you.
Right, Deputy Mayor, follow up?
Yes, and so I think I'll make some comment. The motion as it reads doesn't fulfill what I had been anticipating. So I think just I'll note that, as council knows, I'm a member of the Audit and Finance Committee for Simcoe County, and have also viewed the most recent Innisville Committee meeting. This partly gives me the basis for continuing to believe that this council should establish at least an advisory or working group similar to what's noted on page 11, Part II of the of the report, and I believe consisting of three members of council. I completely support the mayor's position being one, as it would be anyway with an ex officio situation, and the other two should be open to interested members. And I'm thinking of establishing something that would be something that could carry on with with future councils. As noted on page nine, it reflects that council members do not provide nor are expected to have technical expertise role in their performance of their duties. So I feel having two other members that are selected by council will allow them to determine who are going to fulfill the role that they're asking them to do. Another part of my reasoning for having the advisory committee in place is to put that additional measure of good governance and best practice and transparency into place for this in future councils, more so in my opinion than what is proposed. From the listed communities on page 10 of the four other municipalities that have operating budgets in excess of Callingwoods, only Aurelia doesn't have a committee. City of Berry is identified as a finance and governance committee with four council members, but has similar terms of reference to the others that are identified as a non-infinance committee. In my view, the magnitude of operating budget is one key factor in assessing this need, but the other is the significant growth in cash and reserve funds over the past 10 years that Callingwood has been improving its financial health. Regarding the concern noted on page 10 and 11 of an audit and finance working group or advisory committee negating, possibly negating efficiencies and not allowing for proper evaluation of the committee of the whole functioning, I believe we are only looking at one or two meetings at the outset. So hopefully, there'd be very little requirement from a time to facilitate. The terms of reference, of course, would be developed similar to ones that we have seen. So at this stage, we'd likely be only providing review of audited statements. So as I said, I don't see it being something that, and certainly those key, important items that are coming to council, the three to five-year strategic financial plan and that, they'd come directly to council, in my opinion. This, the role this committee at the advisory committee that I have been anticipating and proposing is only meant at this stage to be on the audit side and then develop terms of reference from there that meet the satisfaction of the council. So I guess what I'd be looking at is, I guess, an amendment to the motion as it's put forward to allow a third member of council to participate in the role of, in the meeting with the auditor preliminary to the auditor presenting in full to committee of the whole.
Okay, so to clarify the wording of your amendment, you would be asking to add to mayor, deputy mayor, and one other member of council, or mayor and two members of council?
Now, I'll just correct myself. I would be saying two members of council. And if council agrees, then members of council, similar to what would happen with anything else, I think we're going to talk about a little bit later in 6.7, the possible additional two members, they can express interest and be chosen. And so, yes, it would be that it would be the mayor who would sit on, and two members of council who express interest in, I don't think that needs to be in the motion, but it would be, that's how the selection process would happen.
All right. So to be clear, then, it will just simply read that, and that the mayor, no, the mayor and two members of council be requested to participate in the annual meeting between the auditor and key staff, and carry on with the rest of it? We don't need the, in their capacity pursuant to the municipal act and procedural bylaw? Working with the clerk to see if that has, that doesn't go in there, because...
Doesn't match now.
It doesn't match now, so that would have to come out. All right.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to do that for now, and to see where it goes. I might regret putting a line through that.
Yep, that's a comment.
All right. All right. So is everybody clear on the amendment? So the wording is becoming, instead of mayor and deputy mayor, it's going to become mayor and two members of council. So we'll, do we have a secondor for the amendment? Counselor Potts? All right. Is there any discussion specific to the amendment or questions? Counsel Perry?
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. I just had a question for Treasurer Quinlan. You did say we do have an independent auditor?
Through you, Madam Chair. That is correct. We do appoint, or council appoints, an auditor every five years as part of the municipal act. So Sue Bragg, who was here from Baker Tilly in June, sorry, I think it was June, yes, is our independent auditor. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, then we'll vote with respect to the amendment. All those in favor? And opposed? Can we do that again, please? Opposed, one, two, three, four. So it carries. No, defeated. Right, sorry.
I, yeah.
I vote, yes, okay. Oh, right, we don't have Counselor Baines. Let's see, how was it tied? All right, so that amendment is lost. So we'll go back to the original motion. So going back to the original motion, unless there's any further amendments? Oh, Mayor Hamlin?
It could, I would be prepared to propose that the mayor and one other member of council, because the deputy mayor might not want to participate. So...
In other years, you're suggesting?
I'm supportive of that, and council may not want the deputy mayor to participate. That was kind of my point to the idea of two members, and...
Right. So you're proposing that amendment, Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
All right. So the amendment being proposed is that the mayor and one other member of council be requested, and the rest is the same. Do we have a secondor for that amendment? Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, any other discussion or questions on that amendment? Yes, Counsel Perry?
Just on that, I mean, it's here and there, but that takes away the rationale that was given by the clerk on including the deputy mayor in the first place, which I thought had a lot of validity. That's what's making it a little harder for me to take the deputy mayor out of there, that's all.
Okay. All right. So any other conversation on that amendment? All right. So I'll call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment of adding, removing the word deputy mayor and just, okay, I better go. All right, so let's count, one, two, three, four, those opposed. And so that is defeated as well. All right, so we're back to the original, that the mayor and the deputy mayor, in their capacity pursuant to the municipal act and procedural bylaw be requested, et cetera. Any further questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that is carried. All right. Thank you for that. And then down to the procedural bylaw be amended to permit any member of council to participate. Are there any questions with respect to that recommendation? Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. So this was another change in the, in the formation of the advisory committees, that I had hoped that we would consider having a member of council being a regular member of each of the existing advisory committees. Having sat as a member of advisory committees in previous terms of council, I found that it was very advantageous when I came back to the council table, because I felt that I had become an expert in that subject matter, and was able to make a contribution accordingly to council, because we often don't have the benefit of the perspective of our committees at our council meetings when we are making decisions on those matters. However, the notion of making this change to the procedural bylaws so that any member of council could become an ex officio member, I guess would provide a member of council with an opportunity to sort of voluntarily attach themselves to a particular committee, if I'm interpreting that recommendation correctly.
You and all your, what do I, like-minded colleagues.
Okay, so now with this, I just have, sorry, to follow up, I'm sorry. So just, is this, is the thought of this, behind this recommendation, that the member would be, would it be the same member for all meetings, or would this be sort of a drop in and out?
It's, my understanding of the deputy clerk's presentation is that it would be whomever wished to show up. And if it became a concern that there were too many council members showing up for any specific, then we may have to revisit it in terms of an influence of council to the committee or advisory committee decisions.
Right, okay. So yes, I would be very supportive of this recommendation as worded.
Other questions and comments? Mayor Hamlin?
I had a question in terms of how many members of council should be participating in an advisory committee? Because I'm just wondering, is once there's five...
That was going to be my question.
Right? They could be discussing things that would be coming before council as a whole, and that seems to be contrary to the rules, if I can put it that way. So I'm just wondering whether this, this should be amended to say permit any member of council, up to four, to participate? That was my question.
All right. And I guess how would we see that working if five show up, you draw short straws, or how does that work? I'll just have staff respond to the mayor's question, first of all. Deputy Clerk, go.
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. I think the intent was that the council members would express their interest in going to the committee, to the secretary or myself. And then if we felt that there was going to be a close to quorum, we could advise the members that were interested in going, and go from there.
You kind of, thank you, kind of answered my question. It was, just for clarity, that whatever committee meeting, we
whatever committee meeting, we could just randomly decide to go to, like, it's not, we're not serving any capacity other than being interested in that committee or what they may be talking about. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
So if staff could clarify the participation as an ex officio and what that means, please. Deputy Clerk Dahl?
Thank you, Chair Jeffrey. So an ex officio member can participate in all discussion at the meeting other than being able to vote. So they could bring items forward, they can add their content to whatever's being discussed, they just don't have the ability to vote.
Okay, right, that answers my question very clearly. Thank you.
All right. Yep. Clerk Almas?
All right, thank you through the chair. So we did contemplate the issue of having more than four. We, and that's why we were cognizant of, of monitoring the situation. We just didn't want to get into a mechanism where we're tracking and taking on more, you know, additional work as a result of this. It could also be, I'm just trying to think out loud here, that, you know, if a member shows up and there is more than five members, that like a member, just as a member of the public, you're welcome to attend any of the open public meetings. You just wouldn't have full right to, to speak unless, if you see that there is less than four, then you could. So I'm just trying to think that, you know, we'll work ourselves through this process. But if we find that there's a very popular advisory committee, and again, this is just for advisory committees, it's not boards or any quasi judicial body, that that's the process.
Understood. Which leads me to my question during an election year. I think that that process would be problematic in terms of people wanting to be there and participate. Not yet, I'm just making comments so far. Other people may have some amendments, because I'm not getting the sense we're at any consensus with, with this yet. Any other comments? No proposed amendments? Everybody's happy with how they see this rolling out? So we'll call the question then. All in favor of the wording as recommended by staff? And that's carried unanimously. Yes?
I was just thinking I might provide a clarification because I didn't, on, on the matter that I voted no on, the reason I did that is I wanted to make sure that it would be separate on the, so similar to what you spoke about earlier. And I think I should just be clear about that. And, and then that way it'll come to the table for a vote, rather than me possibly having to do a reconsideration or something like that. And I don't think I would have to, but I just wanted to be clear about that.
That's great. Thank you. Mayor Hamlin?
I just wanted to leave, I can write an email later or just say no before this comes back. If staff could give some consideration to whether the members of council who sit on advisory committees in this fashion, perhaps we could take a page out of the Town of Blue Mountains book. We actually don't have any advisory committees sitting after June of an election year. So maybe we could say, I don't know, I'll just sort it here, that any of the council members who are attending these don't attend after June. We can let the committees keep going, but no ex officio members. Thank you.
Would you like to make that amendment at this point, so it's in consideration for the next meeting? Okay. All right. Well, Mayor Hamlin is proposing that we add to the end of the ex officio member of any advisory committee will not attend after. What was your date again?
Say June 1st.
June 1st.
In the election year.
Oh, nomination day, there's.
Oh, nomination day, okay. That's good. That's why we have a clerk.
All right, so you have that wording, okay? Does everybody understand the amendment? Do we have a second, or Counsel Potts? All those in favor? And the amendment is carried, and I need to vote on everything again as amended? Well, vote on everything again as amended, just because. All those in favor as amended? And then they can't say I didn't do it. That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Good, excellent. All right, 6.7. CAO 2023-11 Sustainable Development Goals, SDG, Foundation to Community-Based Strategic Plan, CBSP, and Downtown Master Plan Steering Committee. Is there any kind of preface you're giving to this? Oh, Clerk Almas. She can't. You're off the hook. Clerk Almas?
But I do have to thank the executive director's assistant for the speaking notes, because she has assisted both CAO Skinner and myself in this thinking. The team that's discussing the community-based strategic plan thought, how are we going to establish this steering committee? And we felt that this could be a perfect opportunity. So I just have a few quick notes. On June 5th, council requested staff investigate opportunities to realign the positive research and work that the former Collingwood UN Sustainable Development Goal Task Force has set into motion, and how that expertise could continue to support the SDGs and other indicators in linking to the new community-based strategic plan. Collingwood, in collaboration with the UN Economy Forum and UN Habitat, hosted the habitats in town on Collingwood World Summit for three consecutive years. The summit's led the discussion on the role of towns and small cities in achieving sustainable development goals. In particular, SDG 11, Sustainable, Resilient, Safe, and Inclusive Communities in Cities. While Collingwood remains committed to the SDGs and sustainability, Collingwood is no longer the international lead for this work, given the funding and resources required for international leadership on a longer term basis. Previously, the task force provided technical advice and capacity building for the Collingwood World Summits. Staff recommend the expertise and knowledge of the former task force would be an ideal evolution to form the steering committee membership for this important project, together with the council representatives, to be determined, and the BIA representatives, as previously recommended by council, for the downtown master plan work. The former task force was comprised of the following representation, which was felt to be an excellent fit for the steering committee for the strategic plan. That included the mayor, the FCM counselor rep, business and community members, two to three, development community members, environmental sustainability and climate change group, and a public interest group for SDGs. It is also recommended that steering committee would also have the ability to select other community members to participate on the steering committee with the needed skill sets to support the important project in setting Collingwood's vision, values, and goals for the next four years and beyond. This flexibility will ensure the efficient delivery of the project and limit any delays that a full recruitment and council appointment processes would entail.
And that is the review. Excellent, all right. So we have no public input in the gallery, no public input remotely, and I will read the motion. The staff report, CAO 2023-11 Sustainable Development Goals, SDG, Foundation to Community-Based Strategic Plan, CBSP, and Downtown Master Plan Steering Committee be received. The council asked the members of the former Collingwood SDG Pioneer Town Task Force to be members of the 2024-2027 CBSP and Downtown Master Plan Steering Group, including to support the selection of SDG and/or other performance indices for Collingwood's programs and strategic plan, and that the steering committee be authorized to select other community members with the needed skill set to guide the successful and collaborative outcome of the community-based strategic plan and downtown master plan projects. Can I have a mover and a second, please? Counsel Perry, Counsel Ring? Comments and questions? He's looking a little tired. Need oxygen. All right, okay, I think, I think basically our comments have all been, you know, kind of reflected in the other items discussed before this. I think it's an excellent recommendation, and I'm very supportive of it. Yep, Deputy Mayor?
Just maybe a quick explanation of timing for the two other counselors to express interest?
Right, good question. Do we have the answer? Clerk Almas?
Certainly. So following council's decision this evening, I will be, and if anybody else has an interest to participate, let me know, but I'll be sending out an email to all members of council to seek up to two additional members to participate on this steering committee.
And is that after the mayor and I, as previous?
Correct, it's a total of, max of four. So it could be just the two members, but if there's more members of council interested, we'll be putting it out there. If there's more than two, then we'll be bringing it back to council and having a vote. Yep.
So I was thinking about the fact that we have the council meeting next week, so this will come to the council meeting. Are you anticipating, hopefully, then, being able to, if, if, if there's two, then you'd just bring the names forward, and, or if there's three, we would vote then?
Correct. So we're looking at not doing appointment processes, and hence why the steering committee would have the flexibility to select members to even potentially come and go, as they need to have that skill set that's missing. But council would have to consider an appointment for their own members if there is more than three. But if we only have two, we don't need to come back to have council appointment.
All right, so the answer to the question is, is if you're interested, you should, you're sending out an email and everyone can respond. Okay, all right. All right, so seeing no further questions, all those in favor of staff's recommendation. And that is carried unanimously. What an agreeable group we are tonight. So we did seven, there's no other departmental updates that have come up since I've been before. We've done eight, we've done nine. Is there any other business? Counsel Houston?
Is now an appropriate time to bring forward that notice of motion?
For sure, you can just, yeah, just tell us about it.
Okay. So it would be to form a steering committee consisting of staff, council, proponents in the arts and culture industry, and the public be formed to ensure the progress of the project of the Arts and Culture Center. Might need to be reworded, support the vision of the community as a whole.
That's a great start, and I know the clerk will help you with that. So we'll watch for your motion to come on the future agenda. All right. Any other business? Public delegations, we have no one unless Jessica wants to. Anything you'd like to say? I'm sure there's no shortage. All right, with that, then, who would like to adjourn? Counsel Potts already headed up, sorry, Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Good timing, despite all that was on that agenda. Mayor?